To order, just so that no one is surprised, we did order a gavel for future meetings just to work on best practices and in case needed and, you know, for all the raucous chatter we have going on. So, at this point, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I called it.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
We're not taking attendance, should open the meeting.
Oh, we don't have attendance on there.
We can add that.
Yep. We will take attendance to open the meeting.
Thank you.
Stephanie, should you be able to take your attendance?
Becky Beisel?
Here.
Stephanie Mahn?
Here.
Brian Davis?
Here.
Kelsey Wades?
Here.
Lisa Hedin?
Here.
Dave Pembel?
Here.
Scott Kurgan?
Here.
All right, and then Superintendent Teshman?
Here.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I notice on item three, recognition of visitors, public comments and correspondence, it's not in alignment with our current policy on public comment. So I feel like I don't feel comfortable approving the agenda with that, just 'cause it doesn't match our current policy.
So, for now, that area is a placeholder because we do have in our policy that people can speak at the meeting, so it is a placeholder.
But they have to put it in.
Yes, and we can still recognize visitors, so.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the recognized visitors or recognized correspondence, you know, if we get a glorious thank you letter or something, I'm super confident of passing that around. Shouldn't pass around me letters, but I want public comment in compliance. And if we don't have it, I, you know, we would know that in advance, 'cause somebody would have to make an advance request.
All right, so then I would also like to ask that we allow flexibility for when McPherson comes in order to get their presentation. They are stuck with the slippery roads, and so that we can work them in once they come here. And then the other one is Dave Hademan has requested in, there's a special education staffing update under items for discussion, part F, that we could move under the preschool space options presentation in order to kind of have his two talking sections together.
So moved.
Second. All right. With all of the.
So do we have two motions on the table right now?
Well, so we would need to approve with the changes that have been suggested.
All the changes.
Mm-hmm. So do we have a motion to accept the agenda with the changes?
So moved.
Second. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. All right, so then, are you still okay then with the recognition of visitors? It was just the.
Yeah, yeah, still comfortable with recognizing visitors. That's in compliance with our policy.
So, thank you to everyone who has come out today to do the school board meeting. Welcome. So, motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on December 11th and the January 8th, 2020 board organizational meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Should we be approving the minutes from our special meeting yesterday as well? Do we have those?
I don't.
I don't think it's imperative that we do it here just to clean them up.
At some point, they should be.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be tonight, but.
I think we could do those, being it's a special meeting on Thursday, we could.
That's fine.
We could do those on Thursday because we don't have them ready, so I think that's acceptable.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, announcements and recognitions.
Okay, so first of all, we had a work session following our organizational meeting, and we put out some timely things like how did, how does the board feel about finding that perfect Hastings fit for the order of the meeting and some of the procedures of how the board functions? And with three new board members and an interim superintendent coming onboard, would the continuing members and the body as a whole be comfortable making some adjustments? And we heard that they were open to that, and so the chair and I had a meeting, which would be a normal meeting, to prepare the agenda. We're on a tight timetable this time, and we have plans to actually begin preparing the agenda immediately following this agenda, so we get on that kind of nice lead time each month and get into a pattern of when you're getting your information and when the agenda comes together and how we get it out to the public. But in our meeting, Kelsey and I thought we were kind of ready to jump in rather than dip our toes, so we're asking your patience and for the continuing members that some of these things are not going to be exactly the way that they were before. We're working, looking towards policies, especially following best practices and some MSBA model policies, which currently aren't a part of the Hastings policy book, including the policy on making policies. So we want to get our committees organized, especially our policy committee, and not only address the policies that were waiting to be first in line when that committee was formed, but also go through the 200 series and make sure we have everything the way that you want it. So we'd be using those MSBA best practices, but they can be customized as we adopt each one. So we aren't changing the visitor policy, that would be reviewed with all the other ones. So we kind of put a placeholder there, and we stuck our necks out knowing that some things that are going to appear odd are going to be, you know, in question because they're different, and we're just going to, you know, want to work through this meeting. We also will have a recommendation coming up later to adopt the use of Board Book for communicating all our meeting documents. And so we, in reorganizing the meeting, we also kind of drafted what it might look like if it was Board Book, only we had to embed the documents into the agenda, and they would be attachments in Board Book. And we have a quote for you to look at and to consider that later in the meeting. So I just wanted to kind of get right out the start that, you know, like I said, it is a little uncomfortable to work through that, but it's also still new for everybody. It's a good opportunity to get the current board all in agreement on how they want to run the meetings. But in the meantime, the chair is exercising her leadership capabilities to give this a try. And so one of the things that's on there is we'd have a spot for good news, and normally I would have a long list of all the wonderful things happening in Hastings, but I haven't been here long enough to accumulate the list. And unfortunately, this is not a good news item, there's a little bit of a silver lining, but it is an item I thought that was worth acknowledging for the record. Last week, we had one of our students, Teagan Johnson, age 12 of Hastings, the oldest son of Chad, and Tracy Johnson passed away peacefully, surrounded by his loving family on Tuesday morning, January 14th, at Children Hospital in St. Paul, following a recent skiing accident. And Teagan was a Pinecrest Elementary student previously and is currently a seventh grader at Hastings Middle School, and his brothers, Brecken and Emmett, are in the district as well. The youngest being a preschooler, a visitation was held last Friday because it wasn't a school day. Many of the staff were able to get there and participate in that, and Teagan's family kindly requests memorials be made to the Teagan Johnson Memorial Fund at Vermillion State Bank. I will tell you, the silver lining is I got to witness the flight team or our crisis team in action, and it is really a best practice model, and there's just amazing staff that were leading that. And the rest of the staff was responding to that very favorably with their guidance. They held a staff meeting when the news was shared with the middle school staff, and as an outsider, I could really tell that obviously Teagan gave much more to the Hastings Middle School community than he ever received back. He was just somebody that was very impactful, so it's definitely been a difficult week, was a difficult week, and continues to be a challenge for that staff. So just kind of out of a memorial for the record, I want to mention that that event took place, and I promise in the future I will share much more good news than sad. But that's the report for that right now.
Thank you, and our thoughts are with the family and the community as they continue to go through this difficult time. So next on our agenda is items for discussion, beginning with the superintendent search firm's presentation, and so MSBA is here to give the first presentation. Would you like to come up?
We'll get started.
Sure.
Should I see the mic is on? Everyone can hear me okay? We're all taking the record. We're good? Good. Thank you so much for having the Minnesota School Boards Association here this evening to discuss our executive search services. We're honored to be here to tell you about what it is we do and how we can assist the Hastings School District with your search. My name is Barb Doran. I am the MSBA Director of Leadership Development and Executive Search, and with me tonight is Sandy Novak, one of our service providers. Sandy, why don't you tell a little bit about yourself as well?
Do I need to use a microphone? I have a real powerful voice. I usually do professional development in front of hundreds of people, so I usually project pretty well. My name's Sandy Novak. My experience is mostly from Burnsville, Yggdrasil Savage School District. We were there together at one time, and I guess I didn't realize that as much. I'm also from New Break, so we have that connection as well. I have been retired from that assistant superintendent position in Burnsville for 10 years, and I have done associate superintendent position, and then I also have done an interim position as a superintendent in Butterfield, Odin, and now I work as an education consultant doing professional learning for teaching and learning, mostly in literacy across the country. I'm happy to be here with you, and I work with Minnesota School Boards Association on a lot of the superintendent searches.
Thanks, Sandy. We're going to tag team the presentation, so we'll be switching back and forth here. So let me know if that's inconvenient, but that's how we're going to work it. So I would like to suggest we'll give a lot of 20-minute presentation. We do want to allow enough time at the end for questions and answers, so we're not going to spend too long talking about MSBA in our process. You have a lot of information in our proposal, and you can certainly refer to that if you have questions for us during the Q and A, or if there's anything that piques your interest in the presentation itself. We definitely want to have time for that conversation when we're done. So does that sound all right with everybody? All right, great, thank you. So this is a different kind of clicker than I'm used to. You can just right-click once and it'll move. Look at that. All right, thank you. So the search team for this search, it consisted of myself and Sandy Gunlock, I'm sure most of you know, if not all, Sandy, with our executive search services. And then Sandy would be our service provider that would assist on this search due to her depth of experience with this kind of work and her personal experience as a superintendent. We also have access to the full roster of employees at MSBA. The resumes of those folks at MSBA who work in executive search are in your proposal, and I won't spend time on that, but there's a lot of people really at your fingertips to assist with the search as we move forward. What does MSBA do? Well, MSBA does a lot of things. We did assist with the interim search as well, but that was very limited search. That was not our full suite of services. So tonight, we're going to visit with you about what's available for you with a full search service from MSBA. And it really falls into these broad categories. We will help you plan the search, facilitate your stakeholder engagement, recruit and advertise the position, screen candidates, facilitate interviews, and develop a post-hiring plan. And we'll go through each one of those here, starting with plan the search. How many of you happen to attend the roundtable at the leadership conference last week on superintendent search? Okay, so some of you have seen the handout of how to conduct a search, right? Okay, this is very similar to that, and the very first thing we recommend your district to do as part of the search process is to decide your approach. Generally, that is, are you going to do this in-house with the resources and staff you have within the district here at Hastings, or are you going to look for outside assistance and outside guidance? From all intents and purposes, as I can tell, you've decided your approach is to look for some outside help. That's not necessarily the stone, but that is usually the first big decision for any district looking for a new superintendent. The next thing we suggest is identifying your search timeline. I'm going to hand these out, I think, I have, you know, hopefully enough for at least every board member and then one for the public back there. But on the second page, it says sample search timeline, and the only thing I can say about this is you really, really need to decide on your timeline first thing. That's extraordinarily, extraordinarily important. And I'm going to emphasize that with you because I'm going to refer to a moment your RFP, if I might quote, that you are highly motivated to begin, and that there is an accelerated nature to this selection process. That underscores the need for the timeline information. So early in the process, you'll sit down with all of your calendars. The search process is the entire board. We want all of you at every meeting barring really unusual circumstances. So you'll bring your calendars to the first planning meeting. These are just some of the steps we typically want to identify all the way through the conclusion of the search when you actually make an offer to a candidate. You need to lock those in your calendar. Once they're in your calendar, they're there. All of the processes in executive search are subject to the open meeting law, so you can't go changing them once you've locked them in without giving that 72-hour notice so the public knows when you're holding the meetings. So locking in that timeline is super important, and there are a lot of steps involved, but that makes sense, right? That you need to really have the roadmap identified, okay. In addition to this timeline, you want to talk about parameters of stakeholder involvement. We didn't do this with the interim search, but it's very important. You talk to your community, your staff, your students. Sandy's going to touch on stakeholder involvement soon, so I'm not going to dwell on that too long, but that's a really important part of your plan. Hiring criteria, the leadership profile, know thyself. As a board, you really need to know what you're looking for. What superintendent fits Hastings Public Schools? All right? As part of the hiring criteria, you need to be looking at what sort of experience is important to you, what sort of characteristics and character is important to you, what backgrounds do you want in finance or equity or all of those different areas, what really fits here. One thing I do want to mention, when we were here in, I think, September, the board members that were here at the time, we had given you a list of criteria, and we had you choose your top six. There's a lot of criteria on here to help winnow down that profile that then went in your vacancy brochure. One of the things I wanted to point out that since September, that was a real early search, MSBA has started to implement our steps toward an equity focus at our organization, and as a result, some of the characteristics and the criteria are known through an equity lens. So that's a little different. For those of you who saw this in September, there's some additional information in here as far as not just as board members, what you're looking for, it's also included in the survey. So the community has input on things like diversity, inclusion, equity lens, collateral with the leadership, all of those sorts of things. So that's going to be a little change if you have your other profile with you from last September. Keep in mind that you're unique. There are wonderful superintendents all across this country. There are wonderful superintendents all across the upper Midwest. The person who's best for the next district, or the next district, or a district 500 miles away is not necessarily the best person for your district. You really want to understand what you're looking for and find that fit. And that just makes sense. I think some people get a little starry-eyed with qualifications or resumes or other things, and what you're really looking for is that match. So we're going back to the hiring criteria. All right, I am going to touch real briefly on the survey and then have Sandy stand up here as well. The hiring criteria, again, is part of an online survey that is part of the stakeholder involvement. Much of it mirrors what the board looks at when the board says this is what we're looking for in our superintendent. Now, this is a very quantitative tool, so the online survey gets your folks to go, it takes about five minutes, you click your top six here, your top six here, there's a rule for comments. Depending upon how you provide the information, we have the link and everything set up in advance for you, you can get hundreds and hundreds of responses through this, and people are asked to identify if they are a community member, a parent, a staff member, a business owner, students, whatever fits them best, so we can categorize some of those responses, and we're looking for trends, all right? So the online survey is a very, very powerful tool. However, not everyone has access to a computer. Not everyone speaks English to surveys in English. So we also recommend we keep hard copies of this at the district so people can come in, get a survey, fill it out, you can assist them if there's a language issue, and we've had districts lately that have been sending folks into the community where there might be pockets of people who are maybe more marginalized and don't necessarily trust the public system of education as much, and so they're collecting feedback in Spanish and in Somali and bringing those back as an aggregate to contribute to the survey. So we want to make sure that it's truly representative of a cross-section of the folks that live in the Hastings district. That makes sense as well, correct? Access to this survey is really important, as is access to listening sessions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sandy.
Okay. All of this falls under the stakeholder involvement. One of the things that we think is very powerful is to hold one-on-one interviews, and so the way we do that is we'll come into the district and we will meet with each one of the board members separately. We ask you a number of questions. The questions are all the same for everybody that we interview. Then we also ask each one of you to give us names of three individuals, two to three individuals, who are key stakeholders or key leaders in your community. And so you want to have a nice cross-section of who those individuals might be within your community. It might be the fire chief, it might be Rotary Director, it might be the Chamber of Commerce Director, it might be somebody that leads a faith community. Whoever those people are, you actually contact them and ask if they feel comfortable having a one-on-one interview. If that, if you get their name and say, yes, I would be interested, you just turn those names over to me, and then I would facilitate setting up a schedule for those individuals, and it will be done over a two-day period. We say that we can facilitate up to about 20 school board, excuse me, school board members and then 20 school district staff or community. So it might also be your teacher leadership and, you know, some of those members as well. So 20, and if you need a few more, we can facilitate a few more. Then that next bullet there says, we facilitate community and school district staff listening sessions. You have five buildings, and you can decide, do you want a listening session at each one of your schools? And typically, we will do that before school and after school in the schools, and then we also will do it at various spots throughout the community. So some communities will say we want one on the east side, we want one on the west side, we want something in the central. Others will find us going to, like, if there is a population where there is high density, they might not feel comfortable going places, or they might not have transportation, things like that. So we have done it in those communities as well, and we can go directly there. We want, again, to give lots of opportunities for people to tell us what they're looking for in the next superintendent, so we can gather that information and turn it over to you. The next one says that we will facilitate community and school district staff question and answer forums with the semifinalists. When we determine, when you determine the semifinalists, typically, we bring them into the district for a full day, and during that day, they will go from building to building, and they will have some meetings throughout the school district and that kind of a thing. And then typically, in the evening, right before they meet with the school board, there is a question and answer session. And anybody can attend that question and answer session, but if you have three semifinalists, the community can ask questions, but whatever questions are generated on that first evening will be used on the second evening and the third evening as well, so that we have a fair and equitable system for all. The person that asks the question does not have to be there all three evenings, just the question will be used for all three times. And then the next one says that there's a training of community and/or staff input committees if desired. You are the people that are making the decision, other people can serve as, you know, giving you information. So this one hasn't been used a lot, but we're open to that suggestion also. You know your community better than we do, and so you know what is valued within your community.
Okay, if I may add one thing to stakeholder listening sessions, in addition to staff, district administration, district support staff, we'd really like to speak to students. And so having a student listening session is really important, ninth through 12th graders, and we would really love to have a cross-section of those students. You have a lot of different kind of kids here. They're all needing different things to be successful. They all have different thoughts, opinions, likes, experiences, so we really want to have a student-focused group as well. If anywhere from eight, you've done up to 40. And it's the same exact five questions that we're asking the teachers, that we're asking the district administrators, that we're asking the community, so it's a very level playing field. Again, the questions are the same and the qualitative conversations as well, and those students, and making sure that the voices that are within your student population are represented at the table is also really, really important. And then note also that we make a point that stakeholders are only in advisory capacity. You know this, but you at the board are charged with selecting your next superintendent. Input's important, involvement's important, decision-making rests solely with the board. Right? Okay.
Okay, the next criteria is that we recruit and advertise for the position. There is a strong school board perspective, so that's included in whatever we do to recruit. We cast a wide net. Because we're Minnesota School Boards Association, a lot of people in the state know who we are already, and they're looking at the website. If they're interested in positions, they're also looking for others, you know? They might know somebody that knows somebody that would be a great fit for your community, and they'll pass it along that way. We also look at other areas for getting that word out. We will send information to assistant and associate superintendents, superintendents, central office-level positions, executive directors, that kind of a thing. And we also are an equal opportunity search organization, which means that if you have internal candidates, they will be treated just like everyone else, okay? And that's only fair for you, it's also fair for those candidates that are internal as well. And then each search is different depending upon who applies. So you might say that, well, we are unique, we have a unique community. People always ask how many people will apply for this position, and what we look for is the quality of applicants. It can range from anywheres from 10 people in smaller districts to as many as 35 or 40. But if you don't have quality candidates, it doesn't matter if you have 100. We typically get, you know, good candidates, but, you know, you just never know. So if that doesn't happen, you know, we just open it up again, and hopefully we'll get it right the first time, right? Okay, the next one, recruit and advertise the position. That brochure is crucial to advertise the position. Here's where we say, you know, Hastings has this great community, you have a beautiful location, you're close to the metropolitan area, you have a strong community within here, so we don't think that there's going to be an issue with advertising for the position. You're a desirable place to be for a superintendent.
If I can add also, for those of you that have the vacancy brochure from the last search, the interim search, this would be two sides. That was only a one-sided, it was an interim, it was a short-term limited search. This will be two sides, so you have a lot more room to really talk about the points of pride for the district, really paint a picture of the community and the opportunity. So what makes you different, what makes you attractive to candidates, will go in that vacancy brochure, but it's twice as much space as you had last September.
The position is posted on the website of Minnesota School Boards Association. We also posted on the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Those are the two big organizations in Minnesota that if you're looking, if a candidate is looking for a position, those are the places that you'd go and seek out. We also put it on the Saint Cloud State University's ad post service, and most candidates will search those three locations. We send announcements to school districts like I mentioned before, and then there's also the bi-weekly emails that go out. So they'll just say, you know, here's a Hastings position, this is what they're looking for, this is the criteria, and that way, you know, there's also that kind of, I call it word of mouth, because if you missed it on the website, all of a sudden, it flashes across your desk and you go, oh, I might be interested in something like this. All right, the next one says, we screen the candidates. There are typically five professionals that work with Minnesota School Boards Association that will gather together. We will go through all the completed applications. Sometimes we have candidates that will start preparing an application, but they don't complete it. They are not eligible for the position then if it is not completed. So we review all of the completed applications. After we have looked at all of those applications. After we have looked at all of those applications, we look at the hiring criteria and try to align that candidate's qualifications to the hiring criteria. We also identify the applicants who best meet the school board's criteria. So again, when you determine what those criteria happen to be for your school district, that's going to weigh heavily in who is going to be selected for those beginning interviews. The other thing that we do is we make some recommendations to you for, we usually give you about four to six candidates that we would recommend for you to take a look at to interview, but we also give you all the candidates. You get to see all the applications. And you do that by coming into the district office and reviewing the candidates that way. We conduct a preliminary verification of references, so we do just a little pre-check, not like you're going to do when you actually look to see, you know, is this candidate really viable candidate? But we will do that, just that preliminary look. And then we also do a pre-interview with the applicant, so they get to know a little bit about you, and they can ask some questions of us before they get into the big process of actually doing the interviews. The other nice thing, as former assistant superintendent, superintendent, I always thought it was great that the Minnesota School Boards Association is here during the process. So whenever we have interviews, whenever we're doing the face-to-face, look at the stakeholders and that kind of a thing, we will be in your district and we will be right beside you. And that helps with, you know, knowing that you're following the letter of the law. It helps keep you abreast to, you know, these are the things that we should keep in mind. Minnesota School Boards even helps you post those positions, gives you some terminology on what that looks like and that kind of a thing. So we're here throughout the whole process, and we will be here for both the first and the second round of interviews.
I'm going to revisit one point Sandy made, and that is regarding the process. MSBA's process is outstanding. And one of the things you will hear us say over and over again is it walks a fine line between adhering to all the state statutes regarding open meeting law. If you have been to anything at MSBA, you have heard us talk about open meeting law requirements, that this is a very open and very transparent process, while balancing that with the Data Practices Act. Your candidates have a right to privacy. No identifying data, obviously no names, but even the experience is redacted, so people cannot figure out who the candidates are before you select your, say, final six that you do want to interview. Once you've chosen those final six, those names go public, and they know that as part of the process. But before, right up until that makes meeting, someone could withdraw their name for whatever reason, because they decided not to pursue this opportunity, or maybe they had a different one. So balancing the open meeting law with data practices, super important. And I think that's one of the things that MSBA's process does best. I'm really proud of that and proud to be a part of it. All right. So the last step that we wanted to cover is that post-hiring plan. And I want to ask you this question real quick. When you hire your new superintendent, how many of you want to see that superintendent fail? Show of hands. I never ever get a hand, ever, because you definitely want him to succeed. Your job is not done when you sign the contract. Your job is not done on July 1st, when they start. You have to assist during that first year to have very clear expectations of what you're looking for from them. It's kind of like drinking from a fire hose sometimes for the new superintendent. There's a lot to learn very quickly. So you can help by setting first-year goals, first-year expectations. You want to set them not only for the superintendent in combination with them, but also for yourself as a board, what you do to support the goals that you're setting for that superintendent, including those stakeholders in the process, so they feel welcome and included in the process. You make introductions. You ensure that they're meeting the people in town that they need to visit with to be successful. And you want to monitor that plan throughout the year, because you might need to make adjustments. You might need to tweak things. So being very aware that first year of what you can do to contribute to their success. Including the proposal, you'll see that we come back for a meeting with the board and superintendent soon after they've started, usually occurs in July or August, to do an onsite workshop with you about district expectations and superintendent evaluation. That is included in this. All right? And then we also visit with that new superintendent on the road one-on-one, just to see what questions they may have about MSBA, about the district from what we know, and just to do our part to make sure they're successful as well. All right. Moving on. I'm close to my 20 minutes. I'm going to whip through this one really quick. All of those resumes in that proposal, I am not going to go through them, but I will tell you this. The depth of knowledge, the folks that are available to assist with this search is unparalleled. These are just some of the years of experience that people on our team have to help you. Superintendents, administrators, people who sat in your chairs as school board members, executive search folks who have experience in that area, that's a total of 381 years professional experience in this line of work. If you add in other experience, such as teaching, or coaching, or et cetera, the MSBA team has 504 years of team experience. Excuse my formatting. That box didn't work. But it worked on your paper, so I'm working on it. That's a lot. Is that a half-century? Century's a thousand? No, century's a hundred?
Century's a hundred.
It's five. It's five centuries of work. That's a lot. And yet, at the same time, I've been really impressed with how forward-thinking MSBA is. Proof of that, in our strategic plan, we have two goals, to be the go-to organization and to have an equity focus moving forward in all that we do. So I'm really, really pleased to see that as well. So that's who you'll be working with. All right. Why MSBA? You're in charge. We are a school board association. We guide you. We are there to answer all of your questions. We will never tell you what to do. We'll tell you what the law is. We'll tell you what the pitfalls are. We'll tell you what the opportunities are, but you're going to make the decision. You are in the driver's seat of this. We're going to empower you to do that. You know us. We have a very knowledgeable staff. We have national reach through the National Association of Superintendent Searchers. Our communication is a real strength. There's a lot going on. Once you actually start this process, it is busy. Keeping you informed, usually through the board chair, through a district contact person, is really important to us, to make sure everyone's on the same page with their expectations. Again, those last two points are super important in talking to your stakeholders. Getting representatives across section really matters. So in conclusion, I'm out of breath. This is our mission. We support, promote, strengthen the work of public school boards. That is all that we do. That's the heart of MSBA. And as a result, we know public school districts, and we know how a well-run superintendent search fits into the big picture. This is not a world of silos. This is a world collaborative leadership, where there are ripples everywhere. Every decision you make as a board will impact the success of your students. It's all about student achievement for all, correct? That's why you're in these seats. That's why you want a strong leader who fits the profile that you have created. And that's why we feel MSBA is a very good choice to assist you at this point in your process. With that, we're going to open it up for questions. I thought we'd go sit down, but we can just stand up here. Okay, why don't you come up back around here, Sandy?
Oh. I thought we were going to sit down. When I see Sarah.
See, we're in agreement, right?
I can't see these three folks wanting to sit in.
All right. So we're going to stand.
Why didn't you just say we were going to stand then instead of stand?
Sorry. See what good communicator is she?
She backed you into thinking you had a choice.
All right. Questions, please.
Are you comfortable with the timeline that we have from now to July?
Have you established a timeline specifically as to when you want this person hired?
Not the hire date. No, but we want them.
Highly aggressive, or whenever those words were. I'll say yes. I will say that you can also move too fast. You want to conduct a thorough search. It needs to be well-thought-out and carefully done. Now, in our experience, searches used to take four to six months. When I started MSBA, it became four months. Last year, it was three. That's pretty tight. We are now seeing searches from planning until contract signing at about two and a half months. I would say shorter than that puts your search at risk. It doesn't allow enough time for people to apply. However, I will say that because of your interim search, you have a head start. Sandy and I got a lot of referrals from people who were interested in an interim position, if it would give them a leg up on the permanent position. And you had instructed us, this is an interim search. We will launch a full search down the road. And we shared that with some folks who chose not to apply. So there are people for whom you're on their radar already, and I think they're waiting to see it posted. So you may have a head start. So you possibly could do it in two to two and a half months.
Yeah. We haven't said, I don't talk about a specific timeline, but, you know, we want somebody starting first of July, so.
Oh, yeah. We want a contract signed April something.
You know, in advance of that, okay.
Yes. So yes, we're comfortable with it. It will require a lot of effort from board members. It will be a lot of meetings. It will be a lot of material to review. If you're comfortable with it, we are. Absolutely.
Barb, you mentioned that you guys have kind of moved a little bit in terms of how you do your reviews in terms of the equity piece. Can you talk a little bit more about how you got from where you were to where you are now, in terms of equity piece, and why that's important to you?
Yes. Do I have that survey up here? Okay. So as far as the questions we ask the community in the listening sessions and the questions in the survey, because it's pretty, this is the actual survey. I have copies of this if you'd like to see it. We realized that these questions apply to sort of the general majority culture of communities in Minnesota. And the majority culture in Minnesota tend to be white, Christian, small, medium, large school districts, but they weren't written through an equity lens. We didn't have questions in here about inclusion. We didn't have questions in here about what it means to be an equity leader. And so we've added those because we recognize the importance, one, to the board setting that as a hiring criteria. Is that something that you need your district to deal with? Some districts are not changing demographically. Hastings is changing demographically. We looked at your trends for your students, and you have more students of color in your younger grades. We know you have an socioeconomic diversity in your community that may be widening as well. We know there's a lot of retirement folks, perhaps on limited income, either in or moving into Hastings. So ensuring that all of those populations are reached as part of the stakeholder survey, and that you are able to identify, if that matters to the board, that that will be something you either want experience in, your leader, or because if they're coming from a Minnesota district, they may not have had that opportunity. So if they don't have experience, perhaps they have a receptivity to it, that they can acknowledge that there are education gaps, that there are, there's not equitable solutions for all students. We can't treat students equally. That's very different than equitably, which ensures all students have a chance for success. So moving the questions toward that was our big first step. And I'll admit, MSBA is on a journey as well. And so for us to move into this sphere is really exciting. I was, in another life, the executive director of the YWCA in Acadia for six years, and our mission was to eliminate racism and empower women. And when I worked there, guess which half of that mission I really could relate to and comfortable with, which is empowering women. And the racism part took a lot of hard work. I went on a journey myself for six years to become more comfortable with the idea of intersectionality and disparities in marginalized populations. And I learned a ton, but I didn't start there. And MSBA is recognizing that themselves and taking some really great steps toward becoming more equitable, not only in our search processes, but in our training, and in our policies, and in everything else that we do. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anyone else have any questions?
We do have a question about the, getting the stakeholder involvement and really getting a voice of the community, their input. Obviously, we want that to, the survey to be accessible to everybody. How long, what is that duration? What does that timeline look like?
Longer doesn't necessarily mean better, because if it's longer, they forget about it anyway. So usually, it's open for about two weeks. But we make sure that it's posted on your website. It's posted in a variety of different places. It goes out in the newspaper, local newspaper, that is available and that kind of a thing. And we also say that there are hard copies in the office. So longer doesn't mean better. It just means that we have to be, we have to be exact in telling people, this is when it's going to open, this is when it's going to close, and here's how you get, how you have access.
Okay. You answered my second part of that, is the promotion of that survey.
We have press releases that you can use to customize your district, to your media channels, however you get the word out. Now, if you have the luxury of time, if you had a longer search window, maybe four months, some districts choose to have that online survey completed and our analysis in front of you before you create your vacancy brochure. They want to inform the hiring criteria from that survey. And then they may use the listening sessions, which granted, take more time. They may use those to help shape the questions for the first round and second round of interviews. In your case, with such a short timeline, potentially, and if you want to go up into March, April, May, you can. It just sounds like you're a little more anxious than that to get going. You could use both the online survey results and the listening session results to help shape your interview questions. And your interview questions for the first round may be more, or may be a lot more different than your second round with your finalists. So I think the opportunity for stakeholder involvement, as Sandy said, does not have to be real long. The purpose is of what you're going to do with it, because please don't collect the data and not do anything with it. You know that when you collect that, when you hear what people are saying, you're going to use it. That's why you're doing it. So you could use it probably for interview questions more than the brochure. The brochure can get out more quickly if you hold those and just do them simultaneously.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Oh, yes, Scott.
Just, just one thing here. I just need some clarification on the timeline, because I keep hearing, I hear, well, it's a short timeline, it's a long timeline, et cetera. So we are at the end of January, okay? Because the board is going, we have a special session tomorrow. We're going to be making our decision at that point on what direction we're going to go. So let's say we get this, whichever firm we choose, engaged the beginning of February, and we have Superintendent Pasha through the end of June. Realistically, what is best practice for when we should be looking to have a signed contract? Because I look at, I look at this and I say, well, we have February, March, April, May, you know, that's a full four months right there, and then we have, you know, all of June as a buffer. But am I missing other complexities and constraints? Because obviously, we're not the only district out there going through a search, et cetera. So I'm just curious what your recommendations are in that, in that way.
Yeah. It is high season right now. If you look at the MSBA website, we have thousands of hits every month on our job, superintendent job openings. It's one of the most popular ones right now. Everybody's looking at it. M.A.S.A. would say the same thing. The complexity is, there are districts who either are looking, are about to negotiate now. There are also districts in the very early stages. We have plenty of proposals out that probably will start, you know, kick in perhaps in two or three or four weeks. If you wait too long and you think you have a lot of time, because July 1 sounds a long ways away, an awful lot of great candidates will have signed with the district. They will be under contract in April, March, or April. By the time you're into May, I don't know that your pool would be very big of the kind of candidate you're probably looking for. They most likely committed somewhere else. Does that make sense?
It does. That's, that's helpful to have that in the back of our minds as we do this. Now, when I, when I look at the MSBA website, and I went out there and took a look at, there's a big mix of districts out there. I mean, Hastings definitely has a niche as to where we fit, you know, not only size, size of the district, size of the community, location, you know, in the state, you know, it's not going to be a fit for everybody, just like some of the others out there, you know? So yes, there's going to be some cross-pollination between candidates, but it's not like, well, every candidate is, is a perfect fit for every district. So I guess I factor that in a little bit, too.
You might attract some assistant superintendents from the metropolitan area that are looking for a superintendent state. You might attract some of the smaller districts that have been a superintendent in a smaller district and want something different. So yes, you're right. You have a unique population, and you have, you know, you should have a pool that's very, very nice.
I guess where I would like to land is that we are not in a rush situation, but I don't want to drag it out, you know, for all the, for all the reasons. I don't want this to be a, you know, six, seven-month process, obviously. So we'll have to discuss it as a board what that looks like, but it sounds like we have some flexibility there, and that's what I'm looking to.
You do.
To confirm.
I think candidates, when they throw their hat in the ring, they primarily look at three things. They look for location of the district. That's big. And location Hastings, that's great. Reputation. Anyone who does their homework is going to look for news articles, what's reputation What's reputation in terms of superintendent and board relations? Has it been rocky? Has there been a lot of turnover? So I say those two things and then your salary and getting those identified real quick. There are a number of districts similar to yours in terms of those three factors that are either open right now or will be open. And some of them may be open because their superintendent is looking for a job somewhere else currently to move into a larger district or one that's more diverse. So there's some movements where districts don't know until April that they need a superintendent by July 1. And at that point, our recommendation usually is, you might want to look for an interim to tide you over. You are required to have a licensed superintendent. Often people throw their hat in the ring and they're like, I'm going to give it a shot, but they don't have Minnesota license yet. They're going to get one, they say, by July 1, but there's no guarantee with that. And so, in fact, last night, we were working with a district that narrowed their list from the applicant pool to 60 interview. Someone called us at about 2:00 in the afternoon to say, I need to pull my name. I just got offered a job last night. And so they pulled their name from the search last night and they were one we were putting forth as one of the final six for that district. And she pulled it because she didn't want her name to go public. If she were named a finalist in that district, because the night before she'd been offered a job. She hadn't settled a contract yet. But it just, there's so many moving parts that sometimes it's very hard to predict anything. But you're sitting well. It's a good district with a good reputation. You shouldn't be outraged. I would not take too much time, though, because people are moving in. This is, this is high time between now and probably the end of March, early April.
The part that I see consuming the most amount of time is going to be the community involvement, the community outreach and making sure that we are planning that properly and that we have enough opportunity for that to occur. The board, if it's anything like the last time, will make that work. I mean, people at this table are quite dedicated to what we do and we will make it fit in our calendars and we'll make it happen. But you can't put that on the community as a whole. You have to make it convenient for them to be able to attend.
Exactly. And we can open the survey the, the day after your planning meeting. So the electronic survey goes live immediately. And then Sandy, you can speak too. There's two days of listening sessions and in-house workshops and so on and so forth. When they're planned appropriately, though, it doesn't seem to take long.
No, and it really runs like clockwork. People are there on time and they're conscious about, you know, this is my opportunity to speak. We also say that if they're not available on that day to come in, that we will talk by phone also. So most people feel it an honor that they can ask and will do everything they can to accommodate that schedule.
Just one more question, and this is around the equity and diversity part of this. You mentioned that the survey, both online and on paper, is only in English. Is there any possibility of having? The online version, I would imagine, would take a bit longer, okay? But the paper version, could that be?
You can do it. You can translate it yourselves in, in district. We usually tell the district that that's there.
Well, yeah, they're, oh, okay, because there's actually services that you can.
We could, but we have to charge you for it. You know, we have fees that MSBA would incur and our fee for this is about the lowest we could go with the services we've got. But if you want to add any things like that, you're welcome to ask us and we certainly will just give you a good beforehand with that.
But we also had just started that software that, that can scan it and translate the documents and such.
Not always perfect.
Yes.
It won't be perfect, but it is.
Right, but when I say not, not always perfect, it can be not always perfect and in a really bad way.
Yes. I think your best, it might be to send a trusted person into the community for folks who don't speak English and just read the survey out loud and say, how many of you in that language would say this, this, this? And just tabulate it verbally and then turn it in. And then we'll add.
We've done that before, too.
A verbal, a verbal presentation of it in survey.
Yep, I'm just looking for options.
Absolutely, you need options, especially when you're community diverse. And on the timeline, the one that's in the proposal, we did show you could wrap this up by early April 2020. Which wouldn't suggest you going to May. You'll, you'll miss, I believe, the biggest wing of opportunity for a candidate to live in. Okay, great question. Anything else? All right, we've taken enough of your time, but thank you again so much. It's an honor to be with you. If we have any other questions, I'll leave my cards at the table. Anything else? Oh, I wanted to leave with you the book list. I was asking, Scott, I can't remember, did Sandy do the workshop with the four of you that were on the board last summer or follow the Hiring the Right Superintendent workshop? Okay, so you may have these books, but I brought some for the new board members. But if you weren't sure, Scott, you had one, right?
I probably knew in my folder, but.
This will be just a little more detailed, fleshing out of the process.
Just since, just since this is a televised meeting and for transparency to the community, can we mention, is it appropriate to mention the cost?
Oh, yeah, it's all public, all transparent.
Can, can we outline that, please? Would you, would you do that for us?
Yes.
Because we, I know we have it in our documents, but that way.
Yes.
Those, those following along at home, I'm sure.
Yep, all of the services in MSBA. Or shall I shout out?
Nope. Oh, thank you for inviting me.
That it is on in the proposal, so I don't have to dig through here. The cost that is in here is an $11,000 search. That includes all of our costs as well, our travel costs, everything that we do, copies. There's no additional charges on top of that, so you know exactly how much you are in for it. If there are other things you want done, such as translation services or additional postings somewhere, we can add those, but that cost in here is 11,000. So whatever page says fee, I think that's outlined, eight? Page eight. Are there any questions on that? I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Okay, great. Well, thank you again. It was a pleasure seeing all of you.
Yep.
Have a good meeting and if you need anything else, I'll leave a couple of cards there.
Thank you, especially for, for traveling.
Yeah, that weather, I tell you.
That's a piece of cake.
Minnesota. Crazy. Becky, thank you for the flash drive. I actually would have left without that.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Have a good rest of your meeting and drive home safe tonight, everybody.
You too. And then Dr. Gary Schnellert, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, from McPherson. Yep, is here to talk about your search process.
Good evening. My name is Gary Schnellert. I'm representing McPherson and Jacobson. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight, although it's not a very pleasant place.
It's a pleasure to get here.
In any case, what we do is we assist school boards in selecting their superintendents. We don't select the superintendents. We basically hook you through the process and you can make a very good decision. And essentially, what happens, we go through five phases. If we are selected, the first phase, I will come out here, I will meet with you as a board and then say, okay, now let's pick the criteria that you want your new superintendent to have. And we go through that particular criteria. And then we advertise that criteria. At that time, when it's being advertised, we also meet with the community groups. We will have community groups that we will meet with as well as all the stakeholders in the school district. For example, the bus drivers, the cooks, and we will meet at convenient times for them. And they will also have an opportunity to do an online review and input for us if they are not able to make it. At that time, we also have a lot of people basically going to conventions. So what we will do, and this is the prime time of the year, is we will make a brochure on your behalf and that, that will go over to the conventions. We get a lot of people stopping by on the convention floor to basically take a look at, to see what is available, where these communities are, and things of that nature. That was phase two. Phase three, essentially, we are asking for applications and we review those particular applications. Typically, we've been getting about 35, 40 applications. Some of them are not qualified, most of them are. And what we do is we take those applications and we take your criteria and we try and match it with those particular applications so that we have a nice fit. And essentially, what we'll do is that we will then interview those particular candidates. And we don't just take the references that they have on the paper. We have a lot of people that have internal knowledge of particular people. There's over 150 consultants nationwide. And basically, we use that particular network to get information on particular people. And when I'm interviewing, one of the things that I will be asking the people is, okay, you've told me this, you told me this. Is there anything in this person's background that will embarrass or hurt the school district? And the other question I want to ask, is there anyone else that you can tell me that can contribute to this person's resume to allow him or her to have a clear, or a clear picture of what is happening and what the person's background is like? So that falls fairly stringent controls. Once we do that, let's say we narrow it down, depending on what the board wants, five, seven people, and I will present those to the board, those five or seven. I will also give you the resumes and applications for everyone, if you like. There's not a problem with that. And then I'll tell you why we selected those particular people. And then, once we select those particular people, then you make a decision and say, yes, this one's in, no, this one's in, I'd like to see another one in, things of that nature. And once we have the core group, that's the final group, that's the one that basically gets advertised and there's a release to the press in regards to these are the finalists for the district. At that particular time, we will also set up interviews with you as a board. And basically, we'd like to have entire day interviews, not just with the board, but basically, all the stakeholder groups as well will give their input. What we ask these stakeholder groups to do is basically, give us your recommendation as a group, put it in an envelope and seal it. Those envelopes will come to you as the board before you make your final decision and say, okay, what did the teachers say? Who would they like? What did the bus drivers say? Who did they like and why? And basically, that either confirms your decision or you'll say, okay, we better look at this again to see why they picked this person, we picked another, or whatever the case might be. But it gives you an opportunity to take a look at, to see what are the stakeholders telling you? Is their preference and why? Once you have selected the superintendent, phase five is the last phase. And that particular phase, what happens is I come in with you as a board and basically, the superintendent. He or she has already signed their contract. And we sit down and say, okay, what criteria are you going to base the evaluation on for this particular person? What does he or she need to do? What do he or she need to be successful at and how are we going to rate it? And basically, what happens is basically, it gives you an opportunity to set the parameters at that particular point and also you have something that you can basically evaluate the superintendent by. With that particular piece of information in your hand, what that does is that affords you a two-year guarantee with the person Jacobson. If you aren't happy with the person, or if the person is not happy with you or the community, whatever the case might be, we will basically redo the entire process for you. And with that, the entire process, we pick up the expenses. The only thing that'll be an expense for you is the advertising and things of that nature, which is also an expense the first time around. But basically, it'll give you that two-year guarantee and it will also allow you to basically get comfortable with your particular superintendent because you already had an evaluation piece to be able to evaluate the superintendent. That's it in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any questions or if I have to answer or try.
Well, thank you for all of this, the material to look through.
I should mention is that in the last five years, we have over 98% of people that we've placed that are retained. And in the last 15 years, which is quite a long time for a superintendent, we have nearly half that are still were replaced though. So basically, it's a big hit.
Now, you are a national search firm and so I am wondering, how many superintendents have you placed in Minnesota? I mean, how much experience do you have in, in Minnesota in particular?
We have, we have about three consultants in Minnesota. I do most of my work in North Dakota, South Dakota, Manitoba, Saskatchewan. I do a few in Minnesota. But Minnesota, they, they usually go with the School Boards Association or things of that nature. The other ones, they tend not to go with their particular associations for whatever reason. And we had a lot of clientele in those areas.
Just one point and note, this ties back to my question that I had for MSBA. I note here that you have online stakeholder input surveys, one in English and one in an additional language.
Right.
Do you offer paper copies of that as well?
We can, yes. Tell us what the language is and then basically we'll write the paper copies.
I'd like to know what, what your firm does in terms of when you're trying to determine a criteria, work with the board to determine a criteria, in terms of an equity lens? In terms of looking at it through kind of a lens in terms of equity? In terms of socioeconomics, gender, race, all those types of things? What type of work you put into that?
Well, now, I'm a little confused. You're asking me about equity, but you're also asking me what the board's involvement is in that.
No, no, no. I'm saying that obviously you'd be working with the board to figure out what that set of questions would be for particular candidates. I'm just asking about your experience in working through that equity lens that's much more prevalent now than it was, say, even five years ago.
Yeah, basically, what we do is, you know, we ask the questions of the people, the applicants, the sensitivity questions and things of this nature, and also equity in education in what they plan on doing, what their experiences have been in that regard, and we try and address it in that particular fashion. But we need to know what your concerns are in regards to equity and you can try and match that person.
And then also, this is in here and just like we had asked MSBA, can you talk about your fee?
I wish I could. I, the head office has put it out, so I'm not exactly sure.
I know. I just wasn't sure if you, anyway.
I just got these today, so I haven't even had a chance to look through it.
It's at the top.
Yeah. So it, it goes according to the number of students in the district, but it's 15,900. And there are additional. nine hundred, and there are additional costs, like for advertising, depending on where you want to advertise and things of that nature. One of the things for advertising, we use all the free advertising that we can with the, mostly the superintendent's associations in the different states. The Person Jacobson has a large website that we advertise that on, so that's part of the internal cost. And so, but if you want additional ones, they're in here, and then we can give you rates depending on how you want to advertise it.
So, the fifty-nine is for, just at the set number, and if there were other areas to use to advertise, that would be an additional cost.
That's right.
Yeah. In here, it says the total is not to exceed fifteen-nine?
Right.
And then the fee for the search is ten, ten thousand five hundred.
And basically, when they say exceed, that means depending on expenses. So, I'm traveling out, so I have mileage and things of that nature, and so there's the other inscriptions.
Does anyone have any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We're having a meeting tomorrow, a special meeting tomorrow to make our final decision and then go with you.
Okay. Yeah, if you make, if you selected us, for example, then I'd try and make a meeting out here as soon as possible to meet with the board and basically, set up the criteria.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for traveling, too.
Yes.
Have a safe trip home.
Also, good to know. Home is light.
Drive safe.
Slow, probably.
All right, thank you. Okay, so our next item for discussion is the preschool space options presentation. And so, we have a couple of staff members here to discuss.
I should also share that, in addition to the presentation, previously, there was a group, I'm not sure who was all in the group and how far it made at the board level, that looked at essentially the pros and cons of a few options. And so, we have a handout for that, that I believe got to every location. And so, that's kind of going backwards before I got here, what has been talked about on this topic. And then, since I started, it's been abundantly clear that there's some timelines that we have to work with to address preschool space. And so, we were able to get our first possible chance, which is today, to get the whole board synced up together, and then move forward with the information that our staff members and administrators have brought for us today.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Carrie Gore, and I'm the Hastings Public Schools Community Ed Director. Tonight, I am joined by Angie McGinnis, our Early Childhood Coordinator, Dave Haidman, our Special Services Director, and Mike Johnson, our Hastings High School Principal. Thank you for having me here tonight to speak to the question of preschool expansion. I met with previous board members, like Jeff mentioned, in October, but I wanted to make sure everybody was up to date with the most current information. So, right, okay. So, we have two concurrent growth matters that are causing us to grow out of our current space at Tilden. One, the full-day preschool program indicates a need to expand. And then, the early childhood special education program is growing. And both of these issues require space for our staff. We have the opportunity tonight to consider what is best for the future of our early childhood programs. The research out there that supports the benefits of early childhood education is substantial. So, I have some quick ideas about how that benefits us as a community and as a state. So, wealth-focused investments in early childhood development yield high public returns, as much as sixteen dollars for every one dollar spent. Up to ninety percent of brain development happens before age five, making the early years the most important time to invest in quality education. And then, more locally, we see full-day preschool and our early childhood education programs as a strategy to help with declining enrollment in our district, and we strive to build a positive connection to our school district at an early age. So, we really use the idea of the little raiders and making them proud to be a part of the school district and our community. So, tonight, I'm asking you to consider the choices that we have, given that next year we'll need to add an additional full-day preschool classroom and supporting space, as well as an additional center-based classroom. This decision is pressing, and preschool enrollment opens on February twenty-fourth. However, I would like you to consider the plan for future years to come as well. On this slide, I have information about enrollment numbers and contact time for the last six years. Each year ebbs and flows, but overall, you're going to see a twenty-five percent growth in enrollment and an increase of thirty-six percent in contact time. These increases not only represent learning benefits for our students, but they also increase demand on space. We've asked the Special Services Director, Dave Haidman, to be here tonight to talk about the growth in ECSE along with the statutory requirements.
Good evening, everybody. This is Carrie. Thank you, Angie, for telling me to talk to you on the stand-up. All right. What you have in front of you is the early childhood program numbers for the last four years or five years roughly. And what you're going to see in the chart flows kind of right to left with where we were in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and it'll be on the handout now on the screen, is that you have three different rows here on this chart, and you'll see that we've got teachers at the top, child count in the middle, and some notes at the very end. And when you look at the child count in the middle, seeing that we ended the year in two thousand fourteen, fifteen at ninety-seven students, and that we are currently at ninety-three, keep in mind that the ninety-three that we're at right now is just at the halfway point in the year. We have nine more kids that are about to qualify, seventeen more kids in the process of qualifying, so we're likely going to be ending the year with a much larger number than where we were even last year at year-end at one fifteen. So, for those of you that don't know, early childhood programming consists of two different areas. We are serving kids in the home, you know, birth to two, and we have a team that does that. But then, we have the team that serves the kids at Tilden. And the team that serves kids at Tilden do it in a variety of capacities. We've got kids that come in for speech-language services, phonograms, team-taught classrooms. So, we buy slots in some of the preschool rooms for kids to have their services in a more of a mainstream-type setting with their typical peers. And then, we have, what Carrie referred to as center-based programming. And center-based programming is for the kids that require more exclusive pull-out programming for the entire time that they're there because their needs are more intensive than what some of the other kids are. And for those intensive programs, the group has grown over the last couple of years. And so, in fact, it's grown exponentially. And the difference between the way that we do it in a team-taught setting versus center-based is that we have rules, Minnesota rule and statute that guideline, it gives us guidelines as to how many kids can actually be in a classroom. So, when you're used to being in a Tilden classroom and seeing, you know, twenty kids in a classroom for a regular preschool room, twenty kids is not the same for center-based. We can have, pretty much at the most, eight or nine kids. The rule says that it can be between eight and sixteen, but the reality is, is that you really can't go above eight. So, every time that we have another, you know, wave of early childhood kids that require center-based programming, that require that level of service, it doesn't take much to equal another classroom's worth of space that we need for that kind of programming to take place. So, right now, we have exceeded what we currently have for the need in the room that we have for center-based programming. We're already starting to spill over into another room. We're going to need another room in the future in the fall. And we've already added staff yet this year at early childhood. So, if you even go up to the top row of the handout that you have in front of you and look at the staff that we had in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, to the staff that we had in nineteen twenty, we had about seven staff occupying space at Tilden in fourteen, fifteen, and now we're up to somewhere between eleven and twelve. And if you've been over to Tilden before Mary O'Brien left and we reconfigured that space, it's a little bit like a bad reality TV show, and they're all right on top of each other without the cameras. And so, it really, it gets really, really tight. And we did that because we had to maximize the educational space for kids. And so, like, we're just out of space entirely. And so, I think when Carrie speaks of, you know, the need of early childhood programming expanding, early childhood special ed kind of goes with it. And wherever that's expanding, early childhood special ed expands as well. And one of the reasons for that, and we're no different than any other district around us, is that there's a Help Me Grow initiative that's out there that's been out for about four or five years now. It's a collaboration effort with the State of Minnesota, with the Department of Ed, and the Department of Human Services, that says that there are multiple referral sources that can cause an early childhood referral to occur. So, unlike school-age referrals, where it usually comes from a classroom teacher or a parent, Help Me Grow referrals can come from daycare providers, medical professionals, as well as parents, and as well as other sources as well. And so, a lot of medical professionals and daycare providers are putting in referrals on a daily or weekly basis, and so it's a constant hopper of evaluations. If you are part of Child Study over at Tilden, you are part of a constant evolving set of evaluations. And so, when I say that there's nine more qualifying, seventeen more in process, we're entering the busy season right now, it's going to stay like seventeen more in process as we go month to month to month throughout the year. And so, this is the spot of our district where we've added the most amount of FTE, teaching-wise, in the time that I've been here. We've added it in other places as well, which I'll get into in a little while, but it's an evolving group. And so, it's not a matter of just plugging a classroom in somewhere to solve the problem. I think it's a Band-Aid fix for Tilden. It really is, we have to look for larger spots to be able to grow the whole program, including special ed. So, any questions about that before I hand it off to, I don't know if it's Carrie, if that's Carrie?
Right. Yeah.
Could you make a five-year projection and say that, something that looks like a five-year projection that says, this would be our endpoint, space and staffing need?
With special ed, or entirely?
Well, it'd be lovely if it was, if it was both, of an accumulative piece, because part of this decision is about, how do we solve this one to three years, and how do we solve this at five? But there is, there's an, it feels to me like there's got to be some evident upper limit, just based on stabilizing student population.
What's tough right now is with, the growth really spiked with the Help Me Grow stuff.
Yeah.
And we're now reaching about the three- or four-year mark after that. This is about the time that we might be able to make some reasonable projections, but man, I will say that like the kids that require center-based programming are becoming more and more plentiful. And that group of kids are also causing a bubble up into the elementaries, and it just keeps going as well. And so, like, we have, I will just say, the numbers have surprised all of us in a way that I don't know how predictable some of the special ed numbers would be. It might be more predictable on the preschool side of things, given our community and the size of the families and things like that, but I don't know that I can predict all the special ed. I wish I could. We've had major spikes in special ed entirely, which I'll get into in a little while, too.
So, you might be at a place where we could potentially get an overarching number of students likely to be served by the public schools?
Yeah.
But then, the distribution between center-based, team-based, or general ed population would be challenging?
It would.
Is that what I hear you saying?
That is.
And then, because it's the twenty kids in this amount of space versus eight in this amount of space, okay.
Right. So, much like every district around us, they're struggling with where they come up with early childhood space, and especially with early childhood special ed growing to the degree that they are. And in addition to that, even nine seventeen, our collaborative partner for Feds and Encores and...
We didn't need that mouse anywhere, wherever it was.
They created a program, a mental health program, kind of like a therapeutic education alternatives program for students that are ages three and four as well now, and so we, which had never existed until two years ago. And so, like, that's the part where we're in a bit of uncharted territory with the number of needs and the growth that we're seeing in some of these areas.
Dave, can you share a little bit about the connection between if we're maximizing our space capacity for just general early childhood, and you were to say, start a waiting list or whatever, let those students find placement elsewhere, what the connection is to the district, for the portion that do need special services? What's the financial connection to the district, is even if they go open enroll or go to some other caregiver?
Yeah.
The district is still paying for it?
Yeah, right. We have, as a whole, right now, sixty-two kids that are considered on our child count, which means they have qualified for special ed services that are not in our district. And we get a tuition agreement from the districts that provide the services to those kids. And so, we have to pay for the services occurring in another district because they've gone elsewhere. That's not sixty-two kids at the early childhood level, that's sixty-two kids overall. So, but yeah, if we run out of space and can't provide what's needed, the parents and the families will find it somewhere. We have to provide if they come through the doors here, but if they get frustrated with that, and we don't have slots or don't have room available, or if it's too full, or it's not adequate, they'll shop. And they'll go to another district, and we get a tuition agreement for that, and we end up paying for it a different way. Anything else? All right, I'll be back.
We'll look forward to it.
And we've really taken seriously the challenge to maximize Tilden as a resource.
The mouse is there. So, I don't know, I don't know what fell.
I got it.
There wasn't a mouse.
So, for those of you that have heard me before and then introducing to the new board members, here are some of the things that we've done recently, in the last three years, to maximize that resource. We have reduced our community ed classrooms down to one single classroom that is used day in and day out, from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, so that we could have our first piloted full-day preschool. So, we've completely eliminated that classroom. We've changed the motor room, and this wasn't something that we talked about before, this is new information. We've had to already make that decision to make that a classroom, so that has already happened. We've moved teacher office space into the classrooms. We've built walls, temporary walls, doors, to split larger space into two smaller spaces. And we've transformed closet space down to create assessment space and mother's room, and so on and so forth. So, we've looked at every square inch of Tilden and thought about how we could share the room, and how we could redistribute supplies and all of that in our building. So, just wanted to catch you up on that and make sure that you're aware that we took that very seriously. And I've been here for three years, and I've done that since day one, but I know that they've been looking at that for at least five to six years on how to maximize that space. So, given our timeline, again, we have registration coming up. These are the options that I think we have to take a look at tonight for next school year. I know that when I met with you before, you had a lot of ideas that we've taken into consideration. We've created that pros-cons consideration list for all of those ideas. But given our timeline, these are the choices that I believe that we have for next year. If we stay at Tilden, there will be displacement, elimination, or reduction of programs. The space that we would utilize to expand our early childhood programs also is outside of the secure area that we recently installed, so we would have to come up with a plan and finances to resecure some of the areas at Tilden that weren't done before. And then, we continue to have that space crunch with staff that we talked a little bit. And just to kind of reiterate, there are office spaces that are used by three staff people at this point. And this is a short-term solution, and changes that we'd make, we want to try to do as many of them as possible as temporary in nature. A couple of things to point out about the high school. The high school was built for twelve thousand, and we currently have fourteen hundred students. Do I have that?
Two thousand.
I'm sorry.
You said twelve.
Sorry. Built for twelve, two thousand, fourteen hundred right now. The space that we're looking at is called the C Cluster, and it is on the lower level, kind of when you walk into the lower commons area, it is off to the right, and it has two doors to that section that separate off that block of classrooms. Moving the full-day program, so what we would propose is we move both of our full-day programs to the high school with the wraparound care as well. That would loosen up space for center-based programs at Tilden, as well as space for staff. At the high school, we know that we will have to consider some additional costs, including security features for the area, and then possible costs for a new entrance that we could consider. And then, also down the line, we know that we'd have considerations for future staff costs with having two different locations, because as Dave mentioned, where full-day goes, eventually, ECSE would go. Cause as Dave mentioned, where full-day goes, eventually ECSE would go as well. And then we do see the high school as a potential long-range solution. So I just wanna put that out there as well.
So Carrie, just as a question on that, so for twenty twenty-one, it'd be looking at two pre-K, full-day pre-K classes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, with the wraparound service.
With the wraparound service. So we're not looking at taking yet another step to a third?
If the enrollment was there and we had the space to do it, we could do it at this point. And that would be a great outcome.
So how much of cluster C would you utilize? I'm just trying to picture that space in my head. And it seems like, it seems like it's considerably bigger than two pre-K.
Yep, so there, and uh.
No, you stay here. If, if I'm, if I'm short cutting to a part that's coming ahead, just, I'll shut up and. No, I just want as a high school principal to talk about preschool kids. But if you think of first floor C, we have six classrooms of full size that are U-shaped. We have two doors that go into that. And we have reinforced glass that also has the sheathing in front of it. Then we have a conference room, three classrooms on each side. We have a smaller special services classroom in the end. And in the middle, we have that, that space. So even though we'd be looking at two classrooms, we really would be saying in that first floor C cluster, we would just have that for the preschool program. Any other kind of assessment, parent education, staff would be in that first floor C cluster. So if you think about that, going into there right now, you go into the high school, in the commons, you check in at the security person there, needed during the day. Then you go take a right, you go past the lockers, and then you go into that area. That seems to be a long way to go when I think of primarily, number one, safety for everyone, that we want the students and the parents to feel like if they're going in, that they're going into their space. Likewise, for the rest of the building, we don't want people to get lost or go off to another classroom. So one of the ideas is at the end of the cluster, there is a large window that is right next to the sidewalk, that is right by the horseshoe, if you've ever been up there, kinda that horseshoe area that is a drop-off. And we have a smaller parking lot of about, or in that horseshoe, about thirty-five spaces. That, one of the costs would be if we can put in a storefront double-door glass which is right there on pavement, then there really isn't that need to go into the rest of the building. So that, I think, is what we would really see as a huge benefit, parking right there in that parking area, walking right in. We do have security in the parking lot during the school day. And there's just that great visual that's there as well. So that's, if you can envision it, I'm not sure what you have there, Jeff, that you're showing.
Just the window pictures.
Like where a drop-off could be.
Parking lot is right, that's the view from the window to the parking lot. So there's a separate lower-level parking right there.
So whatever, so whatever, I know that we've discussed what we're going to do for security at the high school as a whole. Okay, are we going to have two entrances? Are we going to, during the day, is one entrance going to be closed? Then the other one become our secure entry? So this would be in addition to whatever else we choose? And we would have to have sim, I, I won't say the same, but similar security measures? Yeah, Scott, the sec, the priority would be, you are going into your place. Right. Kind of that school within a school. Right. Now, we would need to exit that with badging. We could have that bathroom right outside, which is currently for women or females, that we could just have that only for the early childhood preschool and the staff. We could have either a key card, key access, or a key. And no one else in the school uses that unless it's with that program. We have two thousand lockers, and I think only fifty of them get used.
I was gonna say, apparently my children don't have any of them.
Well, there would be the possibility of creating those if we wanted to. We wouldn't necessarily need to, but there is that opportunity to use those lockers outside of that. But we also would, you know, we still have to run a high school. And if you're in the high school yesterday and making a number of announcements of our registration, we have the ability with the PA system to program that area so it would not be on our regular bell system. It would not be on our regular announcements. However, for safety reasons, if we did have an event where we wanted to alert everyone, then we have codes that override different parts of the building. And that would work. So, go ahead.
Oh, so as we talk about security, so if we add that door, I mean, that would be one way. But then the doors that are in the high school, would those also be closed and key card accessed? So then that's really just a separate section for the preschool?
Yes, that was our thought.
Okay.
So, so, so you have multiple classrooms. We're gonna utilize two?
Two for preschool, but then we have the wraparound service and it's a full-day programming. So we, we need to have the lunch service and the large motor space and all of that.
Right.
And, and my point also would be is, at one point, Tilden had a lot of space and we filled it up. And I think that that's something that we would do in a positive manner for the school district at, at the high school.
Right. And that, and that leads to my next question is what, what crossover, if any, would there be to utilizing any other part of the high school, i.e. the commons, the lunchroom, the gymnasium space? You know, anything like that? And it sounds like, well, I'll let you answer. Well, I'm excited about that because I think it's, it's an educational add to our student experience for high school students. When I think, second semester right now, we already have, and some of your children have done this, but we have child psychology and we run a daycare for about a month at the high school. So students in child psychology can learn from that. And we already have Amanda Milholland reaching out, can we do something with preschool? And she does not know that, that this is happening. So the ability to have our child psychology students there in that setting would be great. And I see them probably going into the area. But I also think, wouldn't it be wonderful if our French students could practice reading French and working with our little kids on French or Spanish? Or let's go to the music area, let's plonk on all the instruments? I just really think that there's a lot of neat intergenerational things that can happen. We also are looking for workplaces and settings where if people want to be in early childhood education as a professional or a teacher, they could really partner with that. Also, we talked about food service. I, obviously, we, you know, we feed twelve hundred students a day going through food, food service out of the fourteen hundred that are there. There are opportunities there and our cooks are fantastic if they wanted to push breakfast. Or if there was another way, and I'm not quite sure how we would do that. But, but it would be a commitment of this cluster to preschool. Now, I'm currently using all of the spaces. And how that would work is that if I'm teaching chemistry at Hastings High School, I have five classes and I have a duty and a prep. So if I'm, if I have a prep, my classroom is open. And right now, we don't have many traveling teachers. But the school was built for two thousand, which meant teachers were going to travel from room to room to room. We would utilize and have the six teachers that are in this area, the five-fold classrooms and the smaller for special services, placed in the rest of the building. Since we have had space, we have some smaller classrooms that are using large classrooms. We might collapse those. We might take some tutoring areas and find another spot for that. So there is an impact. But I, I think as a staff and I, I've met with them, if they may be affected, we wanna be welcoming. We know this is a large building, we want it to be used. So we're really pretty excited about it. And there's no specialty classrooms in that area right now? With like, where, hey, this is the only place that it really makes sense for this classroom to be? No, there's not. And the other part is, for how many years have we had Camp Horizons at the high school? Fifteen years? So during the summer, we already have Camp Horizons and they are located in the One-C area. One thing that would be nice with all the green space right near there is if we could have a play area for the students in preschool, then that also would be used for Camp Horizons in the high school. But I also know too, that the parents who are coming to the high school, this might be their first experience with high school kids. I, I'm not afraid of high school kids, but I understand that sometimes they look and act a little different. But I also think that high school kids will be excited about this. They'll see this as an opportunity. But again, we would wanna make sure that it's absolutely the safest place possible for our students. But I just think from standpoint of partnering, when I think of homecoming and if we could have our preschool kids coming out with Raider Nation t-shirts on, and I, I think it would be fantastic.
Well, that was the fun ending. Now I'm gonna go back to budget. Just wanted to give you a sample budget of what it would cost to add a full-day preschool classroom, whether it be at Tilden or at the high school space. And thank you, Jen, again, for your support in pulling these numbers together rather quickly. When you're looking at the all-day program, that top number there is the fees that we collect for the program. And then our major expenditures are, of course, the staff and the benefits, as you'll see there. We will need to equip the room, so we will need to purchase some furniture and then some supplies as well. So that's what we're looking at. Now, I wanna explain to you that these are fund-for expenditures. So these are community ed funds, they'll come right out of school readiness. They're restricted funds and so we have to use them for early childhood. And then also with school readiness, it does have a reserve for things like this where you have these one-time growth opportunities. So we do have those dollars available. The top number there with the fees, I just also wanna point out that that revenue does not include our preschool state aid or our Pathway Scholarship dollars as well. So I know it looks like a loss there, but there is additional revenue as well coming into the preschool program. So the other expenses we talked about, the security, the, do we put a door in? Those are outside of community ed costs, those would be capital costs that you would have to decide on. So that's the fun budget talk. But do you have questions, comments for any of us?
Just one piece on the logistics. At end of day, at the high school, I know that that U-shaped area is obviously very busy. So you've got the, you've got the U-shaped area. And then what would be to the north and to the west of that is the bus, the bus area. And it's all sidewalked and everything is, everything is good there. But what would the plan, or, uh, maybe there is no plan and we'd have to plan for this, but at that time, you probably don't want your parents coming to pick up their kiddos or, you know, anything like that.
Pickups at four-thirty. Yeah, so this is the, this includes that wraparound component, so.
And is the wraparound a must or a?
Good question.
Or, or is that an option?
That is included in the price. And so you can utilize it if you like or not. So you could come to the preschool portion of the day, which starts at nine, and we communicate that out to families.
Okay.
But what we find is parents need to get to work or they need time to get back into town from work or what have you. And so this is an added bonus to being part of the program.
Yep, absolutely. I'm, I'm just thinking, again, safety, little kiddos.
Yep.
To follow up on Scott's question, what number would you say, what percentage of your kids? You could use the wraparound, but you don't have to. What percentage of the kids are getting picked up at, say, two-thirty-seven?
It's an oddly specific number.
Two-thirty-two is terrifying.
I know that you answered.
Oh, thirty-seven squares me a little bit too.
Student cars are moving.
Mike's got. No, two-thirty-seven, the students' cars are moving.
They're gone.
They're gone by then? Yeah, they get out of pretty quick.
Very, really none, cause we explain to parents that class is from nine to three and we really discourage them from picking them up before three. So mostly until four-thirty.
Okay, let's just say, so your class ends at three, you have that service.
Cause they're paying for the whole day.
By the majority, by like sixty percent or?
Most of them take advantage of the whole day. They are picking up at four-thirty, so.
What time are they dropped off?
Seven-thirty is the, is the earliest they can drop off.
Okay, so seven-thirty drop-off and?
Not all of them are dropped off at that point.
I understand, I'm just thinking of the high time for the high schools, get to school right on that same timeframe. So have you guys thought any about that?
We've talked about it, but we haven't gotten into detail about the logistics, cause we didn't know. But we know it's workable.
Well, one of the things to consider on the, on the traffic flow is, if the structure was meant for a capacity of two thousand students, that means there's ample parking and you're basically looking at deciding how the students are gonna come in and out and what you want that traffic load to be and making that traffic for that. And restricting that, you know, right now, people are spread out to wherever's available. The, the high school traffic and parking would be clustered in, in the upper area and whatever else makes the most sense. And you'd really restrict kinda the area in this photo for these programs. And it's a retraining and everything. But as Mike described and we talked about when I, when I went to visit this space, it's a great challenge for the students to, to be the big brothers and big sisters and the role models for these kids. And it changes some of their behavior. Right now, yes, they drive a certain way. You're, you're hoping that the culture changes where, hey, we drive differently because we've got our little brothers and sisters, you know, um, there. And it overall makes for a, a big improvement. There's a lot of research on when students have the opportunity to be role models for any lower grade up, their overall culture changes.
Yeah, this, this is absolutely not a unique situation to have, to have kindergarten mixed or, or pre-K mixed with your older students. And there's a lot of positive. I, I really thank you for explaining that because that was, uh, when Brian brought up the seven-thirty thing, I'm thinking, you know, I live right there. So thinking, okay, what is, you know, I know what it looks like on a day-to-day basis and trying to picture, you know, mom or dad or, you know, whoever bringing their little kiddo in. And, and there's a fairly steady stream of traffic coming through that U drop-off. So it's not like you can stop and park there and, you know, go inside and do your goodbyes or, you know, whatever there. So I really like the idea of having that smaller parking lot or whatever portion of that parking lot come out as a dedicated space for them.
And even though the wraparound care, you can drop off as early as seven-thirty, how many parents do you think come that early?
Oh, I'd probably say with, with twenty kids max, I'd probably say twenty-five percent of them maybe at the most. I mean, they trickle in, but they're all there by nine.
Love to do something different for senior privileges.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's a little parking basis. Yeah, that's true.
Yep.
So I get to ask questions coming from missing all the previous conversations. And, and that may also be reflected in some of our new directors. In the pros and cons, handout, at one point, there were really four options that were looked at.
Yes.
Can we perceive now from your presentation that really the other two that you haven't talked about are not something that the group really even wants to recommend? They're still options, but they're not something that you feel supportive of?
Well, that and the time it would take to make some of those a reality. So if we were talking about finding space in the elementaries or adding space to the elementaries, obviously that wouldn't be a solution for us next year. If the board felt strongly about adding on to the elementaries, that, you know, that is something we, I would help explore in the future as well. But when we're looking at the pressing need that we have right now, that was not a solution that seemed reasonable for the timeframe. And then the other, the curriculum center was at one point an idea, but we believe that that's already been identified for needed space for next year. So it was on the table, now it's off the table, cause it's already gonna be used. And then portables was another idea. And so again, getting those in place and then how do we feel about portables and so on and so forth. So there are some ideas that were presented and we've tried to include all of our thoughts on those. And if we wanna consider in the future, I'm open to that.
Well, I do feel like, um, I'd like us to have a long-term conversation about it. Us being the board and, and special ed and, uh, early childhood. Because, you know, if we start trying to get our hands around what is the really upper limit number and it's, you know, five classrooms of small space, the penalty box and the office middle space, you know, that might not be a five-year solution. And maybe, maybe it's not. So I wanna make sure that we keep this on a, on a regular touchstone. And I think in an ideal world where we could wave a wand, I, I love the idea of the, based in the elementary sites and about building that community and about, about, again, the culture of, in this case, older kids maybe being second, third, and fourth graders, like welcoming in families. But I can understand that that's not a solution for next year. We're not gonna have empty classrooms next year.
Right, right. And can I just say, we had it, um, last year when we, we had it piloted, the first year, went really well. We weren't sure what to expect the previous, or this past year about enrollment. So we kinda gave ourselves a deadline saying, okay, if we don't have X amount of number for the second session, we're just gonna say forget it, because we didn't wanna put families in a bind, because it's kinda their daycare too. Well, then what ended up happening, I think that was like May first was our deadline, just out of respect to families. Well, then July and August, we could have easily opened up another classroom.
Yeah, and Kelly talked about that when we toured in October.
I'm thinking that, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised now that the word's out, um, we've had a lot of success. Parents are really positive about it, that I could, I could see another section being opened up, you know, and realize three classrooms. Yeah, that is a possibility.
Going back to your first slide, you don't need to go there, but one of the points was, this is a strategy to help drive enrollment. was, this is a strategy to help drive enrollment in our schools. And that, what I believe the point there is, is that, once you get someone in the district, they tend to stay in the district, unless you give them a reason to leave. Well, would it be, since we have the space, is there a possibility to even promote some, and this is maybe something for us, but how do we promote this if we have room for three classrooms? If we have room for four classrooms? Let's do it. Fantastic.
I do really like the idea of the high school.
One aside to that too, though, is that we, to you and special ed, that the continuum of programming from early childhood, family and preschool options, all the way through special ed would also continue to the high school. So we've only talked about the preschool classrooms so far. We have not talked about how speech and language, some co-tat, maybe some phone groups, an assessment room, a center-based room. I mean, I think to Carrie's point, it's going to fill up quick.
Sure.
Quicker than we think, because that, like, I think we have to offer the same types of options at the high schools we would at Tilden. Similar to having the call from Pinecrest, having similar special ed services within the same home. I agree with you, Lisa, that I would ideally like to see it in, in elementary, if I could choose it, like, like our neighbors up the road in South Wash, like three or four of their elementaries have early childhood program attached. The problem is right now, is that we have, even from a special ed standpoint, we're looking for room in some of our elementaries because of the bubble of needs coming up. We only know we're going to put some of our existing programming at the elementary next year, let alone adding Tilden stuff there.
Right. Right, but that's why I want us to be, you know, we'll make an informed decision for twenty-one, twenty-two-one.
Yeah.
But I want us to start that conversation, because it is going to have a, a longer front end. And if it is about facility enhancement, or reallocation of space in the middle school, whatever it ends up looking like, I want us to start that conversation where we have time to make it.
Right.
And, and that's why I would love to have a sense of what, what is that five-year horizon? What is that?
Honestly, we band-aided for the last, probably four, started thinking about this.
Well, right. And this is, this feels like, you know, maybe a slightly larger Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it's not. Maybe this is exactly where we're going to stabilize. But I don't want us to stop talking about it after this decision. I want us to continue talking about it, saying, are we stabilizing, are we not stabilizing? Do we really use that space, did we not? What's happening with our elementary enrollment? Is there a way that we can move towards site-based in our elementary? You know, just, just be robust in that conversation. Because I know those Band-Aid solutions, we don't have, the board doesn't have time to react. We don't have time to put it in a budget piece. It's like, holy buckets, we're, we're moving the motor room, you guys toured it, it's done, it's gone, I hope you enjoyed it, and I hope you took a picture, we moved on.
Yeah.
So I want us to get out of that kind of response level and into a more measured...
Yeah.
That, that might allow us construction opportunities, that kind of thing.
Great point.
And we didn't mean to put the pressure on and have this be a short, like, quick decision, but there, obviously, there's a lot of change that happened the last few months. But right now, with it, with registration opening up February twenty-fourth, we, I mean, we have people lined up to come in. We have, right now, we have a lot of tours happening, and I just had one yesterday, and somebody was asking about, I, that, I told them there's going to be two sections, well, are they going to both be here? Well, we're working on space, so I really want to be able to tell them, because it's obviously going to the high schools, different than telling your family that they're going to be at Tilden, so I want to have the right information.
And all classes will be moved to Tilden, or the high school.
With that...
All the classrooms will be moved.
The full day.
Just the full day.
Just the full day, no.
Full day would be the best, full day right now.
I do think, when we look at the budget with that, like you said, there's some that's not included, but then there's also some that's one-time, and that's adding in some equipment. But also, if we've gotten one kiddo into the district now that maybe wouldn't have been in the district before, then that's already...
That's a win.
For two.
They have siblings, younger siblings, that's a win.
So this is really an investment.
I don't see up there, if we're talking about adding that separate entrance, a secure entrance isn't cheap.
Yep.
So I don't know what the cost there is, and my question is, does that come out of fund-for, or does that come out of facilities?
That would be facilities, and that's the capital cost.
But now, when you've talked about a secure entrance, are you thinking a camera with a buzz-in system? Are you thinking something more than that? Can you talk about...
I think that we'll use a variety of strategies. When we talk about the internal doors that go into Cluster C, I see those as being the swipe option on doors that we have in some of our buildings. But I showed some of the board members, and if I've given you a tour of Tilden, you've seen our security features with the camera and the voice activation, and then we pair that with Raptor. And I do see that that would be a good solution for the preschool program on the outside exterior going for us.
Well, since it is tied to another, another facility, logic would say that it has to be, whatever your security level is for Hastings High School, we need to make this new entrance at least to that, if not more.
Yeah.
It has to be at least, because if they gain, if, if a intruder would gain access to this, they gain access to all of Hastings High School.
So if there's interest in the, in the high school option, there's actually another entrance that could be modified, that there's a picture up here that's next to the bump-out window. And that's another place where you can make an entrance. And then there is the entrance on the lower level, which is already had discussion about how do we, we're using security staff, how do we make the entrance itself the barrier? And you would get Wold or whoever you wanted to really look at, that new entrance, using the entrance that's already there, you know, get some estimates on that, what's the actual cost? And also enhancing, or making an early, early childhood entrance within that current entrance, and making that whole thing more secure for all users, and, and you'd get different price points, and you'd get different levels of security. But, you know, the engineer could, could do that. And then you do have funds in Fund Seven, in the construction fund, that could be residual, appear to be potentially residual. So it's not just capital, you know, a capital budget, it can be a construction budget, and allocating it to some other construction purpose after all your planned things are done and under budget. And the last thing that I'll point out about the elementary plan, which is, sounds like a really great model, but you've got the footprint of all three of those elementary schools, and whatever that maximum footprint is, is going to be your end game for doing that model. And, and, and there's no way to predict the trends, because this early identification of special needs and everything is something that every district is struggling with, because how do you predict a portion of new kids coming in that have, have special needs? There aren't more kids with special needs, they're identified earlier and, and better, and that's why we're providing that services earlier. But as soon as you get them into preschool and provide the services, then you've got another group coming in, and those kids that have special needs are going to need it in kindergarten, first grade, whatever. And, and eventually, you'll max, you could max out your footprint, depends on what the footprint is, and I don't even know those structures, what can be added to that structure before they say that that's it, that's as far as it goes.
Going back to the security entrance, is there anything, if, if we were to say, yes, let's try this at the high school, you know, let's move that direction, what happens if we can't get those security entrances designed, approved, installed by the start of the question, the school year? I mean, because I'm not overly comfortable with taking a step backwards, which we would be taking a step backwards from what we have at Tilden if we do nothing, or if we're unable to get that. So what's the, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think you're relying on people.
Yeah, I don't...
You're going to have people actively...
Right.
Escort into the, through the existing exits, I suppose.
Yeah.
I mean, just they get off the cuff.
Yeah.
Which is what we did prior to having secured access.
Right now, we have staff at Tilden, because you can just come into Tilden, but our doors are secure down at the early childhood wing, and we have staff that check badges right now.
Right, yeah.
And, and also just kind of go back, you know, even if we're choosing Tilden, we also need to install security features as well.
Right, sure. We already have something in the works at, or something, it's, it's a glint, okay, here for the high school, that we know we have to do something there. It's just, I, we'll have to be careful how, if we choose that direction, we will have to be careful how we consider security at the high school, to make sure that what we are coming up with also fits this model.
I think to Carrie's point, it would be that at Tilden, if we move to say where the ABE classroom is now, that's not behind the security that, you know, that's...
Correct. But I think, I think securing an area there is, from what I remember of the tour, would probably be logistically easier than tearing out a, a section of windows and creating a whole new access, et cetera.
Right.
So, it's just something that we have to consider, and I want to make sure that we have a plan that we're all comfortable with, if it were not to be able to be, if that plan were not able to be executed by the start of, of the school year.
So, this is a discussion item, and these people brought this to me right away and said, we really need to get on the, the new boards, the newly formed boards radar, because we've got timelines. So it's a discussion item. At any point, this board can move it to an action item, or you're about to form committees and have a finance, I mean, not finance, a facilities committee, that then could schedule a meeting right away and look at this big picture? Or you've got a work session coming up, that this could be a topic on the work session, it could be a special meeting, that's kind of, other than the presentation, is to figure out how you want to tackle this, because it's, it's, it's a lot of short-term decisions, a lot of small pieces that add up to a really big, comprehensive...
Well, my, my question is, what's your real timeline, Carrie? Because it's the end of January now, enrollment opens in February. I mean, it, it sounds to me like there's two choices.
Yeah.
We stay at Tilden, probably can get a hold of the, the security questions. I mean, it wasn't that big of a deal to install the interior doors. Losing programming, I'm not minimizing those losses.
Right.
Or make the jump. So is this a, is this a February kind of timeline where we gather more information, Wold gives us input, we have time for that, or is this honestly like...
You know...
A want versus need. You want a direction today, you need a direction today, you need a direction by some, I don't know.
Right, I mean, because it gets to the point of the matter, is parents need to know where their classroom is going to be, and they'll make decisions based on, and on that information. So, it's very pressing, and the longest piece to this is getting those security features, get going on them.
Right.
Besides all of the follow-up of trying to figure out what the culture of the high school is, and how we're going to do policies and procedures, and all of that sort of thing. So, when I say it's pressing, I truly mean that.
Right, and I'm, I'm not discounting that, I, but I also heard you say, you know, midsummer, you're going to get probably a bump of enrollment.
Yeah.
People going, holy buckets, this kid is still here, and they need to do something with that next year.
We don't want to wait for that this time, because the board's got an indication that it's, we have this huge influx of people in summer, and, and families operate on different timelines, especially for preschool, and so we're just anticipating that that is going to happen. So we want to move forward with the second preschool full-day option.
And families who may be registering in February will want to know what, what school they're going to be sending their kids to when they make that decision. So there's not a surprise in May to say, actually, we're moving from Tilden to the high school.
Into that, so do we have any, do we have any way to get an indication as to...
Do you have a question?
If there would be families that would object to being at the high school? I mean, we see it as a positive. I understand that, you know, I looked at the pros and cons, I, you know, I get it, and I would make my decision one way, but is there any way that we can gauge that? What I'd hate to have happen is, oh, we're going to the, we're going to the high school, and now all of a sudden we lose, you know, thirty families, because they're like, I'm not letting my four-year-old, you know, run around with a bunch of sixteen, seventeen-year-olds?
Yeah, so we have our Early Childhood Advisory Council that is, that has been informed of this and can give us their feedback as per parents in our program. And they are highly supportive of this idea. And, you know, in, in my experience, I've started, you know, birth to five, even infants in buildings with high school-age students, and I have found that as long as you can articulate your plan clearly to parents, as long as they know that there's a plan in place, that they kind of see the on that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just kind of thinking aloud here, because we all, you know, we touted as, oh, this is a positive, this is a...
Well, we got to do a good job of that moving forward.
There may be people that...
I would just like to say, as a community member, I actually just got very excited about that.
Oh.
My child goes to Tilden, so, like, that would be really cool, so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, since we're going to have a facilities committee, and one of the next things on the agenda is setting that, that we turn this whole process over to the facilities committee to have interaction with Carrie and you folks, and come back to our next board meeting with a recommendation on what to do next.
So that's the twenty-sixth of February.
Our next, our next board meeting, or our next work session?
Work session.
Well, but if we're, if we're going to take action at a work session that we make, then that has to become a special meeting.
Then it has to be a board meeting.
So then that's the twelve, it could become one. That's the twelfth of February.
If we think that this is also the direction we want to go, we can, as Jeff said, we can move it to the action items, and then have facilities meet to work on more of the details.
But we need to coordinate, you know, the security issues to Wold, and figure out financing and...
Is there any, is there any benefit to say which way we want to go prior to...
Right.
Working out the final details and talking to Wold?
Do we do a special meeting in February?
I don't know, I'm super torn about this. Part of my brain...
What I'm hearing, based on the comments, is if I was going to place a bet, I would bet that we would be in favor of putting it at the high school. That's just, that's just me.
That's fair.
That's just me talking, but does that make a hill of beans worth of difference if we're going to send this to the facilities committee, and they need to look at, okay, what does security look like? Do we, are we doing all the security at one time, or are we just doing this one new door at one time, and then we come back and do the second part, and how does it tie together?
Right.
And what does that cost look like, and how do we pay for, you know, all of those questions?
I think need to be opened up and reviewed a little bit before...
I, I guess what I'm hearing is we feel...
I just don't know how much we'll know by the tenth of February, that's the problem.
Well, that's what I originally said, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Carrie, about the, the very direct need, but the logistics of trying to tie this all together and make a commitment to say, yep, we can do this, without bringing in the backside portions of the discussion, and actually figuring out, you know, the logistics, the costs, the, you know, the timeline, to make sure that we can meet all that, and then say, yes, we will commit to do that. I, you know, I understand the, the need, easily understand the need, but the issue is how to facilitate and get all those things done in a timely fashion, but yet be good stewards for the constituents that put us in these chairs, to say that we're going to do all the things that we need to do, to make sure that we step to the right or step to the left, it's the right way to go. And that's why I think it should be a process that we use the facilities committee in conjunction with these folks, what was brought up this evening, but also bring in, you know, the security issue, the, those things that come back in the backside.
I'm looking for any fatal flaw.
Yeah.
Where it's like, you know, what I, what I, what I don't want to do is make a commitment tonight that says, yep, we're going to do that, and then a month from now, come back and say, oh, yeah, but now we looked at it closer, and we found this, and now we need to back out of it. That puts everybody in a horrible position, and we don't want to do that.
Just to clarify your motion then, is it moving this to the work session, or is this moving this to the next board meeting?
Well, we, as I was just reminded, we could use it to the next work session. My original comment was, can we wait and do it to the regular board meeting, but we can move it to the work session, and then open it up and have that portion be the board meeting discussion? So that could be done.
So, what, what is the next regular board meeting? What is the date?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of February.
Asking you guys, what happens if we don't make a decision on this to the twenty-sixth? What kind of a bind does that put you in?
We just can't tell parents where their kids are going to go.
No, but we could get, we could get to April, we could say, yes, we're going, we want to do the high school, and we could get to June, and it could implode. And then we're still told parents the best thing we knew. I mean, I think it would be fair in the community to, fair going out of this discussion to say, boy, there is definite interest in the board. Maybe I'm inaccurate. Definite interest in the board in investigating the use of one C as a full-time preschool space. And I think you could tell parents that. Not, we don't really know. We're looking at spaces. I think it's fair to say that this is, this is where we were at, because it's, that is true with the goal of a, boy, the twelfth feels fast. I don't know what Wold could get us. But if, if the question is, do an engineering analysis of, like you said, the fatal flaw, what's the thing we're not seeing? Yep, there's going to be a cost. That's, that's a fair assessment. Having a cost is not a fatal flaw. Being unable to secure the entrance, being unable to provide bathroom access, some, something that we're just not seeing at the table. Can we get that identified by?
Can we reach out to Wold before then?
Well, we will. We'll reach out to him tomorrow.
But have them look into this, give us the details that we have us ahead of time, that we can all look into that, so that we're informed.
Well, the facility committee would look, would, would bring it back to the facility committee with a.
But, but if we can give Wold the heads up.
Heads up right away, that this is what's going on.
Hey, new topic. Come to the next facilities meeting with as much information as you can possibly.
Right. I'm just trying to understand if we want to target the twelfth or if we're going to target the twenty-sixth. Because we don't have a facility committee, we, I mean, we just don't. We don't have a facility committee scheduled right now.
Can we schedule one?
Well, we have to approve the committees first.
We have to approve the committees first.
But then, yes, we can schedule one.
And certainly, even though you have a facility committee,
And they have to, and they have to be able to do an analysis.
You, because it's an urgent issue, you can just spend your work session and the whole board working on it together. And like I said, I sent out a, forwarded an email from Kyle about Wold would like to kind of set up the new calendar, the updated calendar of what's,
Where we're at.
what's, what's left to do on construction, and that could be a time to say, well, then what, what could your turnaround time be on following up on choice A and choice B or whatever, because you probably want to have a choice B too in case
In case something falls.
timelines or whatever don't work.
Well, can, can we do this? And I don't know what the proper procedural way to go about this is, but what I'm looking for is, is there a way to take an informal show of hands here at the table of the board members of, is there anybody here that is leaning towards Tilden versus is there anybody here leaning towards the high school? Is there a way to do that without
Without being a real vote.
Without it being a vote and without it breaking any rules?
Without being an action.
I say we, so we know if we're looking towards it or not, right?
I don't know what the rules are. Right. I, I guess I'm looking for, is there anybody that is going to dissent if we go one direction or the other?
Being it's still a discussion item, I think anything short of taking a formal vote for the, vote for the record is fair game.
Okay. So, consider, I'll leave it to you, Kelsey. Go ahead.
Well, so then if anything is fair game, I think trying to gauge just everyone's interest on one option or the other seems like a great idea.
I, I guess I think that we could go around the table and express our interest in, in, you know, how we think that at this timeframe, I guess, I've had a little back to this, so I think for where we're at right now and where the situation is at, I think the high school is going to have to be an option that we're going to have to make work. I'm not in favor of trying to squeeze something more out of a building, building at Tilden where there just literally is no more room. Next thing you know.
Well, it's literally squeezing something out. I mean, it is pushing something out.
And as parents with younger children, I think a portable would be horrible.
So, I guess I, I'm just thinking we could go around the room and, and give that kind of comment. That would fit with that.
Yeah, that's on the table.
So, Stephanie, do you want to start?
Sure. I, I think the high school, the pros outweigh the cons. My biggest concern is exactly what Scott and a few other members have echoed, is the logistics of it. We need to have that analysis to see, is this something that is feasibly, that can be feasibly implemented into the high school? And we're on a short timeline. So, I think that decision needs to be made soon, but I, I am in favor of the high school.
I lean towards looking for opportunities to develop the high school, but I'd like an engineer to look at, how, what does that really look like?
I'm in favor of the high school as well. I would like the logistics of safety for, you know, the, the security of the doors. I say we get involved, involved, and engineers to say, yes, this is feasible, this is what happens, bring it back to us so that we are all on the same page.
I think the high school safety is my biggest concern. I, I'm concerned about the timing from when we make a decision to make it happen at the high school. So, I want to make sure that if that risk does become, become an issue, that we are prepared to have a, a security plan that can be implemented at, at the high school. And only if we find a fatal flaw at the high school do we say, okay, our fallback plan would be Tilden.
I'm in favor of the high school. I just have a ton of questions. Most of them actually, believe it or not, I think you've covered the security of these beautifully, Scott, so there's no reason to reiterate that. And I can tell you, my kids used portable St. Paul schools for five years. So, I agree with Betty. Portable is a bad plan. I don't like it either. The, the couple of things I do wonder about, Mike, is displacing the staff or moving the staff. I don't know if that doesn't feel about that. I do know that Camp Horizons has disallowed teachers from getting in their classrooms during the summer, and that's been a point of condition, especially with Abby coming along. And I don't want us to get further down the road, you know, teachers getting displaced or feeling like, you know, over the boards and get something else to move, you know, that kind of thing. I want to make sure that we communicate it appropriately and really look at that. Just to make sure we're not getting ourselves in a situation where the staff feels like.
I've met with the staff and just kind of, because honestly, I think at one point, we were considering, should fifth grade come to the high school? I mean, and it really wasn't considered seriously, but we have room, so we've talked about that. But the staff are aware of that. And I think there's some things that, when I met with them, we can do better with Camp Horizons to try and minimize that and give them access. But, but yeah, I mean, they understand, they get it, their parents.
Fair. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, as long as, back to Scott's point, you know, the security of those little ones is considered. And it's a space that, you know, they can thrive in without being run over by a two-hundred-and-seventy-pound, six-four lineman from the football team.
I wish we had someone though.
What am I saying? What am I saying? Say it, a hundred-and-eighty-pound lineman.
I washed my head. What am I?
Actually, Brian, we had some of the football guys come down and work with our kids last year, and the football guys were great. It was awesome to see them interacting with kids, so. We're not worried about football players.
So, then I guess that leaves me. And so, I would say that I am also in favor of the high school. That it, I don't like the idea of pushing programs out of Tilden. We're already dealing with low enrollment, and cutting back on services does not feel right to me. And continuing to put maybe a one-year Band-Aid on Tilden just doesn't seem like the best investment of taxpayer dollars as we try to figure this out. So.
And I'll just add to the Tilden thing. I mean, I've been there for a few visits, and it's a wonderful space. I mean, it's an old space. It does have some infrastructure issues that need to be addressed, and it's great that it's intergenerational. But it is a tricky spot with parking fitting into the block and everything like that, and, and adults can navigate that. It, it's going to be difficult for increased traffic flow for the younger kids to do there. So, you can still have that intergenerational stuff by taking advantage of the programs that fit there. But it, you know, expanding Tilden or trying to figure out something that just doesn't make a lot of sense. It's make it, make it be ideal for what's ideal there, and, and it continues to, would continue to be a great asset for the district.
I think it was a good brainstorming session to just look at all the different possibilities. I don't think we're done.
Yeah, I agree.
No, I don't think we are either. And I was just going to say, maybe the next step could be, you talk to Wold and see if they could be in attendance at our work session. Because that's already on people's calendars. And that, that they bring that first look at this. This first, a first look at preschool specifically, and then we commit some amount of time to, I've, I would love, and I would have loved this for the last number of months, uh, this is how much we went out for in bond, these are the contracts that are out, this is the percent of completion, these are the commitment, these are bids that remain. I would still love to get that in a, like a two-slide PowerPoint presentation. I, I think we're going to get one someday. And, and, I don't know, sorry, Jen. But, I know, they did do it once. They did do it once. But I'd like us to be regularly updated. That's why I feel like it was close, and we, we did see that standing one point. We use our work session time specifically around preschool, specifically around the bond, estimate the remaining dollars, check when more people are at with priorities. And then if there's specific pieces that are other facility work, we'll do a facility meeting. A goal of action at the twenty-sixth board meeting. So, we come out of work session, maybe there's a few remaining questions, we get those resolved, Wold goes back out, answers our questions, and we either go or no go by the twenty-sixth.
With, with the, with the work session, I think. It, it, well, I don't know how, I don't know that we'll, I don't know that we'll be able to make a decision at the work session. I'd love to if we could.
No, I don't think we could.
But then we'd have to call it a board meeting.
No, I don't, and I don't think we could. I think, I think it leads us to, Wold comes forward with what their first take on it is. We have this discussion as a group, maybe there's five more questions that come out, we get those resolved, maybe there's a facility committee meeting in between those two.
That's a much more realistic.
With a goal of an action in, in February.
That's, that's a much.
And I think it's fair.
And just know that we're going to be communicating to the families that this is being a, a consideration.
Yeah, there is. We're looking at it, and this is the way we're looking at it. This is the alternative, and this is the timeline for decision-making, and and I mean, I get that there's, it's not just a facilities question. I see Mike sitting over there. It's not, this is not just a facilities question. I mean, I, I would love to hear at our work session, because we don't have to come, we don't have to present, but if you have thoughts, programmatic thoughts, operational thoughts, policy thoughts that you went, oh, the more I thought about this, now it does work or it doesn't work. Does this change or doesn't? Just to give us like, that thing to think about.
And you can let families know that we're anticipating a vote on this at, you know, the February twenty-sixth board meeting, and that's only two days after, you know, enrollment opens, and so maybe they wait two days to hear what the response is or, or something like that, but.
Madam Chair, I draw my motion.
Becky's just going to throw that for.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your time very much.
Thank you.
Good conversation.
Yep. And then we're moving to Dave for his special education.
Best of luck, Dave, I'll say. They give you a firm handshake and walk out the door.
Right.
All right. So, as a segue quick, I know Tim had brought to all of you back in November, and some of you weren't here at that time, that we had a bubble of kids coming up until the next year going to the elementary level. So, we had already had on the radar that our, our staff has been being increasing by at least two teachers into twenty-twenty-one. Because the, the, that bubble is coming up, there's thirteen to sixteen kids that require what's called LEAP program. LEAP stands for lifelong experiences in academic program. And those are students that have either cognitive disabilities, autism, they need to acquire some social skills, they have some dysregulation issues. They're usually some of our most vulnerable kids that, that have a high degree of behavior involved. And so, that's two classrooms for the kids coming up right there, just from the early childhood level. And so, that would make, at the elementary level, we are, we currently have three LEAP classrooms. They're all in McCullough right now. We went from two to three this year. And now we are adding two more in the, in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. So, it kind of shows you where we're at with our needs. That's just what we already knew. But Sarah Cluckell, our assistant director, and I were looking at some of our trends as we went into, as we were looking at just elementary resource jobs too, at, at some of our elementaries and middle school. And if you, and if you look at the sheet that I just passed out to you, which is child count from the Department of Ed over the last three or four years. While we are a district of plateauing or slightly declining enrollment overall, we are not in special ed. We were at six-hundred-and-twenty-nine kids that were on IUPs back in two thousand and sixteen. We're now at six-hundred-and-fifty. So, it's a hundred-and-twenty-one more than where we were just three or four years ago. And so, we have increased our FTE along the way at, primarily, I said before, at early childhood, a little bit at McCullough, a little bit at Pinecrest, and some at the high school as well. We haven't touched JFK a whole lot, or the middle school a whole lot in that time, but our kids, our, we, our kid count just keeps going up. And so, we, Sarah and I looked at the trends at the halfway point in the year, and before Tim left, we, I just really felt the need to recommend to him that we needed additional staffing. We, we were kind of, the last couple of years at McCullough, Pinecrest, JFK, and the middle school, we're kind of on this tipping point of, I think we can make it with our current FTE, but maybe not. And, you know, the last couple of years, we haven't had to add a lot, but now I think we need to, to add. We, the elementary caseloads were starting to get above sixteen, seventeen. And elementary, I think the sweet spot is between fourteen and sixteen. There's not statute or law for resource room teachers at the special ed level for a caseload limit like there is for center-based teachers like, like LEAP. It's more of a judgment call both by me and Sarah, and also with comps around us. So, I talked to other directors in other districts to say, where are your caseload sizes at for students of like disabilities? And so, we were at the point where we felt like we really needed to add two elementary resource positions, one middle school resource position, and four paraprofessional positions yet this year. So, the status of the hiring for this year is that we were interviewing today, as a matter of fact, for two of those teaching positions. We interviewed last week as well. We thought this might be a good time to catch some of the recent grads at the December grad period. And so, we had, we've had some decent interviews in the last week. I think the problem here in special ed at all times is that unlike, you know, posting for a second grade regular ed opening where you're going to get, I don't know, forty to sixty applicants, we're sometimes lucky to get two or three for, for any coaching. And so, we've, we're constantly kind of on the lookout for, you know, just high-quality teachers that have the right license when it comes to early childhood. Like, we haven't had any applicants hardly with that license in the last couple of years. And usually, we have people on out-of-field placements, used to, it used to be called a variance. And so, it's, it's always a struggle. And so, I just wanted to update you kind of on where we're at. I don't know the likelihood of how we, how likely we will to be able to fill all three teaching positions and all four parapositions. We, now it's five. We have enough applicants to fill the three teaching positions, but I don't know if they're all viable candidates or not at this point. So, that's kind of the status of where we're, where we're at right now. Any questions from any of you on that? Because I know there's a, there's a big budget add, if they were all going to be coming through, not add, but a revision to our budget, if they were all going to come to fruition yet this year.
Dave, could you just clarify a little bit about where we are at in relation to the cap and where, where the staffing will come from?
Yeah.
And then also, your professional, you, Sarah, your professional opinion on what happens when you push the caseloads too high? What are the costs to the district that over longer term can mount up?
Yeah, I mean, because of the funding formula changed at just the wrong time for us. It's going to change again in a year or two, so it might, you know, come back to a benefit a little bit. But our district had just the right, just the wrong combination of our child count going up at the time that the funding formula was set. And so, about four years ago, MBE, based on our enrollment at the time, our special ed child count at the time, established what's called kind of our floor and our ceiling. So, we couldn't get below a certain upper harmless amount for the reimbursement we get, but we also can't get above a certain ceiling. We've been above our ceiling for, I mean, the better part of the time I've been here, and I've been here for six years now. And so, I think the last time I checked the gen, and that was, you know, about a year ago, when we were being interviewed or something, our cross-subsidy effect is around four million dollars. And so, every add that we make at this point, that cross-subsidy means it's a general ed direct impact. So, we're not really getting reimbursement, so to speak, on the special ed positions the way that you would think that we would when you hear, you know, government officials talk about, you know, special ed funding formulas and reimbursement and all that. We're above that reimbursement rate right now. We're, we're, it's, it's going to be a generalized fix, I'm guessing, at this point. Yes, Dave?
Dave, how much turnover do you have of staff in, in your area?
Yeah, high, high degree. For a lot of reasons.
Okay.
Yeah.
What as a board could we do to help you reduce that? Because hiring is super expensive.
It is, but I.
Every, every time someone leaves and every time we have to hire somebody, that's a, that's a cost above and beyond.
Yeah. Most of the turnover we've had, I would say in the last two to three years, have been retirements. So, that, that part, I think, is just a natural turnover.
Sure.
We, we've certainly had some people say, I'd rather not work here, I'd rather work somewhere else. But I will say that that's been the minority of people, people that left. We've also had some non-renewals. And so, we've chosen to have people not come back for a variety of reasons. And so, that, I think, the, again, going back to this, I think the, the majority has been retirement. A lot of people actually seek to work here. I think that our reputation, I think, I don't think MSBA was, you know, trying to, I mean, they are trying to earn a business, but I don't think you're lying to say that this is a desirable school district. I think there's a lot of reasons why people want to come here. We have a lot of applicants that come to the table, like, one that came today to say, I've heard a lot of really good things about the way you do special ed in, in Hastings. But the job itself is just a hard job, doesn't matter where you're working. So, we talked about like front of the house, back of the house. I heard that example in an interview today. Like, we talked a lot about the front-of-the-house examples with, with special ed, the things that we can see, that are like, kind of like going to a restaurant, you can see the things with the waiter and waitress. The stuff that the special ed teachers do in the back of the house, the paperwork, the time it takes to do evaluations, and if you're talking, and most of that occurs at early childhood. I'm not taking anything away from high school evaluations. And if you're talking, and mo- and most of that occurs at early childhood, I'm not taking anything away from high school evaluations, but early childhood, elementary, and middle school have a ton of what's called initial evaluations and reevaluations going on at the same time. The, the high school teachers have more reevaluations, which are a little bit easier than having both things going on at the same time. Either way, it's a ton of paperwork. So if you've got seventeen to nineteen kids in your caseload, which is your average middle school or, or high school caseload, you've got at least seventeen to nineteen IUPs that you're doing every year, which is a long document, and you're doing evaluations, and the evaluation is usually somewhere between twenty-two and thirty pages by the time you're done writing an evaluation with the team. So you've got a lot of those happening as well. So I think some of that is just people that do the job for a while and they think, this is just hard. Not to mention, the students we have these days are just more complex. Um, we've spent a lot of time this year talking about behaviors. We currently have a job posting out there for a board-certified behavior analyst. We've been lucky enough to have four applicants for that position. We're down to, I think, narrowly down to two that we'd like to bring back for a second interview. And the only reason we're looking for a BCBA or a board-certified behavior analyst is because behavior's a big deal these days too, everywhere. Um, not just here. So I think there's a lot of reasons why people spin out. I don't know what the board could do right now, I mean, uh.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, you know, are there, are there new tools out there that we could utilize? You know, electronic to, cause I, the paperwork, the paperwork, the paperwork. Is there stuff out there that makes that easier? Is there a way to dictate it rather than type it? Is there a new, you know, some piece of technology that we could purchase or subscribe to that would?
I mean.
Help?
I, I, we, we try very hard with our leadership team to push out templates and guides and things like that that help case managers just more easily complete the paperwork, part of the job. Uh, it still doesn't shortcut it to the same degree that we'd want. Some districts around this utilize what's called testing teams. So they have a group of testers that just do all the special ed evaluations for the district. The downside to that, though, is that if you've got a testing team of two or three people that do all the testing, and then one or two of them decide to leave, your whole vacuum of knowledge leaves with them, and there's no guarantee that you're going to get that back. And so, like, we, we choose to build capacity right now by having everybody kind of share the load a little bit. And e- even though that's hard for everybody to take their fair share of that, at least we're building the capacity of knowledge and, and ability to do that work right here in the district rather than relying on two or three that could then leave or retire or whatever, and it's gone. So we've considered other options as well, but it's just, it's just a hard job, just the, is the bottom line, so.
And in longer term, when we get to more strategic planning, there are things we can do, making a more robust HR department, which includes talent recruitment, where you're going to invest in not only Minnesota and Iowa-type teacher fairs and things like that, and marketing your district, but getting out to boom places, post-boom places like Las Vegas and Arizona, where the teachers are hired off, you know, you know, right off the street, but then they, they realize there's a lot of burnout be- because of the positions they're in, and they'd love to come to Minnesota, but you've got to get out there and bring them back. So it's, 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 like I said, really emphasizing HR is not just processing people through, but it's talent recruitment, and that's a more strategic thing that we can talk about in the big picture. Short-term, they're out there, you know, using the traditional ways and, um.
We've been really fortunate, I think, I mean, we, it's harder in the middle of the school year to fill these positions. But we've been really fortunate with finding people for a large amount of openings each and every year, and really quality people like that. Uh, we don't always hit it right, but most of the time we do. And, uh, we've been fortunate with that. We, I mean, some, some districts in outside Minnesota are offering incentives and things like that. I, that's a slippery slope, though. I mean, you start that with some groups, and then people that ever hear the last couple of years, they think, well, I have those qualifications too, why didn't I get that incentive? And, and it's a, it's a fairness piece, it's really hard to control, which is true in that process too. But I mean, it's, it's, it's hard. And honestly, some of the districts around us, we just cannibalize from one another. It's like, you know, we have these openings, and then we just take the teacher, and then Salsi and Paul takes one from us, and then Kinder Grove takes one from them. And so it's, it's just a, it's a harder thing, and it feels like a merry-go-round sometimes. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, so continuing forward, uh, the committee assignment draft is up next, and Jeff was going to talk a little bit about kind of how we set it up. This looks different than we've normally done it, and so kind of some of our discussion on that.
So I'll, I'll do it quickly, once again, we're asking for your patience and trying to work with best practices and follow kind of the MSBA guidelines as much as possible. And we always continue to customize these, but we wanted to just come right up, being it's new board, new committees, um, is this can be, um, with somebody, a director could motion to move committee, basically, the committee assignment or committee formation to an action item. And we can pick it up in the action items and introduce a resolution to form standing committees. So we looked at all the committees that are out there, and there are committees that are most likely going to be your standing committees. By resolution, you make them, and you'll always, you'll always fill them, and they'll always have a meeting schedule. We identified one that's most likely an ad hoc committee, which is a new policy committee, which could go two or three years. And when you complete your policy cycle, maybe you, you just ban it at that time. And then we identified all those committees, which are really, um, requirements that the district has by the state, or they are necessities that the district has, but they actually don't need a board member on them. So if board members are going to be a part of the special ed advisory or the American Indian Parent Advisory Council or whatever, that they be representatives to those committees. And having board, board directors representatives to the committees is a wonderful thing to spread out and have that contact. But those are also those extra things that you don't need, are that where you start to get that exhaustion from being on too, too many committees. And honestly, the feedback going around the district is, we function better, and our bylaws actually say that we don't need a board member on there. So if they come, they're coming to represent, just like you would go to any other meeting to represent the district and be there. Uh, but your heavy lifting's going to be on those, um, standing committees and those ad hoc committees. And of course, you can always add an ad hoc committee meeting at any meeting because you need one at that time. Um, so the concept would be, um, motion to make it an action item and come back and by resolution, we've got a little resolution language there, make them standing committees, and then the one ad hoc committee, that's the recommendation. And then Kelsey will, uh, as the chair, talk to you about how she's making your recommendations. And ultimately, she assigns, the chair assigns people to the committees. Um, but the discussion is she, she absolutely wants to talk about where your wishes are and where you think your best matches are and everything. So, so that's really an assignment, but making the committees would be the action item. And, um.
I have a, a couple, couple of questions. What's the value added of calling a standing committee versus the practice we've had, which is a committee?
Well, so one thing with these is that these committees do need to be posted online when they are meeting, just like a typical, a general school board meeting, and give the public notice and things like that. And so we've also talked about how our practice hasn't been to do regular updates on what we're hearing in committees. We get facilities and, but more.
We have facility, finance, negotiations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, just to stop. If there's not a quorum of board members on a committee, why does it need to be posted?
So best, best, this is, this is, once again, best practice.
Okay, so it's not law.
From MSBA legal, is that when you have a standing committee, and it's elevated to that position of it's going to do regular board business, I mean, there's regular things that it needs to do, that you treat it as a regular board meeting, uh, even though it doesn't have the power to make decisions, and it's not a quorum, that, um, that they are posted as meetings of the board, and they are public. And, um, there's an agenda, there's a mission for that committee. Um, and then there's reports back to the full board on the action of the committee. And, you know, best practice is you have a little template so that they meet, they come back, and, and their committee reports, they, they kind of fill in the rest of the board. This is above and beyond what a lot of boards do, but it's best practice. And our conversation was, we might as well pitch best practice, if you don't like it, you don't like it. But, um, it seemed to be what I heard at the work session was, well, look, why don't we work towards best practice? Because all boards across the state eventually sometimes wander away from best practice, and sometimes they have a good reason for it. And i- this is just an opportunity, interim superintendent, new board being seated, to, to try something like this. And, cause if you don't, now, you'll just kind of continue on the way you've been in. And there's nothing technically illegal, legal about it, but several of the board members were, listened to Terry Morrow from MSBA, and he said, I'm going to tell you, from a legal standpoint, the best way to do it, the safest way to do it, and if you choose not to do it, you choose not to do it. He said, but I won't, I won't tell you to do it differently. I'm going to tell you, as an attorney who works for MSBA, I'm going to tell you that what he's, he believes is the ironclad way to do it, and it promotes transparency, and it also, it tells people what the rules are.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just really curious how something like a licensed staff negotiation meeting would look if it's open to the public?
They have, the, those legally have to be open to the public. They absolutely have to be. And, once again, I'm sure you'll find all kinds of people who aren't doing that, but technically, I mean, a- as the person who's supposed to give you advice, I can't tell you.
I can't remember.
We don't.
Have we ever had?
We don't.
I mean, in my six years, I've never had anybody show up, other than the people who were participants in the meeting.
Right, uh, we don't post it, but it is public if, I mean, we, we know that it, it is public.
And if it comes out as some form of strategy, something like that, you can close it at that point. That's what Terry said, correct? Am I correct in that?
No, you were, you were caucus.
Caucus, caucus.
You break out the meetings, you're not, you're not working as a group anymore.
Important point is, and I don't know the Hastings vibe yet, but I've worked in with five other districts, and there's a difference between having a public meeting and the public showing up, and certainly the public doesn't participate. But it's, once again, a theme, a recurring theme that I heard in my time here so far was transparency, transparency, transparency. And one of the things is, you make that extra effort to show that you're being transparent, even though you're not intending to do anything that's not ethical or whatever. But, yeah, there, um, people, people know, when people know they can come, and they know about it, and they know what's going on, um, doesn't mean they're going to show up, but they get that sense that, hey, I could show up. I'd rather watch a movie tonight, but I could show up. They're not, you know, I, I just have confidence in, in the board. And it's, it's messaging, and it's a little extra work. But if, but if you set, you know, we're hoping in this window, um, the routines for how we do these practices, they don't become much more effort. We, we stay in sync on getting them posted and getting them out, uh, you know, and communicated to the public. The board makes sure that it never throws together last-minute meetings and recognizes that the public could show up, and if they do, they're welcome to.
So, so these are, so these are posted is really the only difference.
The standing committees and the ad hoc committee, the representative ones don't happen.
Okay, so, does it take anything away from us if we need to meet again quickly? Like, for instance, with the teachers or with the, with the administrators? We have had, you know, hey, you know, we're making good progress, let's meet again two days from now. Are we subject to that three-day?
Technically, you, you could call it an emergency meeting, but the problem with the emergency meeting is, try not to call it unless they're, you know, they're truly emergencies. And so that, that's a change.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's certainly not the norm, but.
It takes some commitment, and, and I will not be offended if you don't.
This facility conversation we just had could have turned into a, let's get together.
Right. Well, I, I just want to make sure we're not hamstringing ourselves with anything. Certainly, we want to be transparent. Certainly, we want to be above board, you know, with, with anything and everything. I feel like we have been operating in that manner. If there's a way we can do it better, great. I just want to make sure we're not moving forward here and moving backward here.
When you add structure, you add some limitations. And I guess it's just a conscious decision that, that the trade-off is worth it because you're trying to emphasize transparency or whatever. Like I said, not every school board in Minnesota is following MSBA's guidelines to a T. And there's a real limit of, um, meeting police going around and checking on it. Where you would get into trouble is if anybody in the community said, you didn't have a legal meeting, or you didn't post it, or whatever, your answer is, you're right. Or, I mean, there, there, there are some consequences to doing that, and you would be wrong. I mean, you can't win that argument, just hasn't happened. And I guess that, that's where your comfort level comes in. Are you willing to deal with, hey, we really needed to have that negotiation meeting, so we went ahead and had it, and if somebody challenges us, they challenge us? Or are we just thinking ahead that this is the new organizational strategy? And I said, I'm, I'm just putting it out there because the window is, is open, and it's, it's advice, but the board is the board, and the board will decide how they want to set this up.
And I know in the past year, I had gotten a number of calls from community members who would say, you know, I saw a bunch of board members walking into the building, but there's not a meeting posted, and what's going on? And I would say, well, who did you see? Okay, this is the committee that was meeting. But they wonder if there's something secret going on. And even though it's a committee meeting, it's, it's still for them in that peace of mind that they know what's going on, that they don't feel like we're trying to, to hide something or keep something a secret.
I'm starting to walk into the building when there's not a committee meeting. And if somebody sees me and they think something is secret is going on, that's on them. I can't help that.
Yeah.
I think by doing this practice, we're eliminating, or at least mitigating any potential perception of secrecy.
And I said, it, it may be rare, it depends on whether they're having a good year or a bad year. It may be rare that anybody challenges you on it, but it gives you the confidence that, go ahead and challenge because we're going to be supported. And I've had a lot of conversations with our, um, administrators in the last couple of weeks where I said, you know, your record-keeping and your planning is, we're going to court on this one. That'll only happen three percent of the time, but you can't pick which ones? And you're scrambling because that was the one, I mean, you're, you're always keeping your records like you have to present them, you know, in a challenge. And so that's what I'm recommending to them, and that's what I'm, I'm recommending here. And I, I, I was just at the, the phase one and phase two training where that was the recommendation. But even MSBA will tell you, it's your board's decision. You know, your, your board will answer to the consequences, or your board will be comfortable with whatever they're comfortable with. And, um, you know, the consequences aren't, are, are not real heavy-duty. Open meeting law is, is kind of the one area where the consequences do kind of pile up, and it can be a little painful. And this helps you with that as well, so.
Yeah, and the other committees that we have had, and we usually have in the whole list, would still be appointments. So school board members can still be appointed to be representatives on the special ed committee and the tech committee and, and things like that. That just doesn't need to be part of this vote.
So what's the motion you're asking for?
If somebody, if somebody would like to, um, consider for a vote, standing committees and ad hoc committees by resolution, then, then somebody's motioned to move it to an action item on today's agenda, or a future agenda.
I'm moving to make, move to an action item.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, I feel like I don't know enough about this at this point, to support that. I don't understand the consequences. I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not a serial pollster. If it goes to a vote right now, I'd probably vote against it just because I don't understand the consequences. Um, either way, quite honestly.
Any more discussion?
And I don't understand the value.
All those in favor of moving this to an action item?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposing side?
Um, aye.
Okay, motion taken. So then, that'll move down.
Action item.
All right, so next is for discussion, the November eleventh work session date is actually Veterans Day. We can't conduct board business under holidays, so we do need to change that date.
Didn't we have that sheet in front of us, and we still made this decision?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Holy buckets, it was getting late that night.
Yep.
I saw this on the agenda, I'm like, oh, man, I'm confident.
I didn't notice until I plugged it all into my calendar.
I'm confident I had that thing open, oh, look, it even says Veterans Day.
So what's the, what's the?
The fourth.
The fourth.
Right, but what's?
What was the fourth?
What's everybody's?
It's literally five working days after is allowed, previous board meetings. But work sessions and board meetings are not the same thing.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Can we push it?
To the eighteenth?
Work session that month, too, is an option.
The twenty-fifth is the day before Thanksgiving.
We already lose that one.
So we had already moved.
What is the eighteen?
Because the regular four.
Yeah, we moved that last time.
The other way.
Yeah, so I think we need to move it to the four.
So I think the fourth is going to be the viable option there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, can we do a work session? What's happening in November? I mean, can we do a work session, school board meeting on the same day? If we do it in December.
Which would be what date?
The eighteenth, which is the day we already rolled.
Do we just make it both?
That's not a bad idea.
I don't, I don't remember structurally. Well, I think there's probably always, I, I mean, I would post it as a work, as a work session, and maybe there's no topics for conversation. And it, it gets eliminated, but I'm trying to remember what generally happens in November. In terms of big, it's not big budget stuff, it's not the.
It's not truth and, truth and taxation is December.
It's December.
So we could theoretically consolidate it, make it.
Do we have any financial stuff that happens in November, or?
Didn't we get a, well, if we got a revised budget, you did that in December also, that's right, it was just very shortly after the November meeting.
We get our, we kind of get our student count final numbers, that's in October.
Well, I think we can try it, and if we see something coming up in October, then I could be able to do it all in one day.
We can always start something.
Then we make the work session be on the floor.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah. Need a motion for that, or?
Yep.
To amend the calendar. Is this under our discussion items, or it's an action item? So we have to vote to move it? To an action item, and then we have to vote on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a little bit.
This new, this new system's going quick, man. On page two.
So.
And that sarcasm cleared my system.
Okay, so you need a little more tea, though, don't you think?
I know, I should've gone with decaf.
The presentation stuck.
I'm rolling my eyes.
Alright, so do we have a motion to move, um, this to an action item?
So moved, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Alright, proposed amendment to middle school calendar for twenty twenty-one.
So the request is coming in from the middle school to have the first day of school be a fifth-grade day only, so they can do orientation activities, similar to what they do at the high school, and there is some, um, other potential here. We've been talking with a tech group that ultimately they may need to practice their distance, or e-learning type procedures, especially if we don't have a bad weather year this year. And so, when we have these odd days like this, those are great days to have the other students do e-learning as a practice, low-stakes practice, while you have fifth graders in only, or ninth graders in only, and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
That feels like not a great e-learning day, first day. Unless you just log in or something.
Yeah, 'cause you don't have any background information.
Well, it actually could be pretty good for an orientation thing, but, but I'm just trying to say, we're trying to, when, the decision you'd be making is, you're gonna take a day of, that counts as a school day, away from those other grades that aren't showing up.
What?
It won't count as a day of instruction, which normally doesn't factor in, but last year with one of those days where you had to count up your days of instruction, and of course, kids will not be in school. So, there, there's a trade-off. They're recommending it because they think that the trade-off is worth it, and that ninth, ninth grade has a similar experience, and I'm just saying, we can work together as a team to try to add value back into those days, so they're not just unused days for the other, other students.
Is the reasoning behind this because the middle school is going to be under construction during the summer, so that the fifth-grade roundup, whatever that, yeah, the Raider prep that they do where, that we normally had, is that what's driving this? Or is this just a grassroots, hey, we wanna, we wanna, we see value in this, or is this a, hey, the high school does it, so we wanna do it too?
It's a request from the middle school staff to have the same opportunity that the high school does, to do that orientation and to focus their staff on that. What I did tell Steve was, I put it on here as a discussion item, if the board would like you to come and present, we can put you on, on an agenda of a work session or an upcoming meeting, 'cause they, they have time. You've already set, approved the calendar. You can modify the calendar as late as you want to. It's still early enough to tell people, you know, really, make sure you leave, make sure when you leave, and at the end of the year, you know what day to come back is really.
Well, yeah, 'cause next year we start early, too.
Certainly. I think that's a fair question, and I actually think that the reason is they can't get in there for Raider prep, but.
Now, this is a long-term thing they wanna do.
So what, so what would our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers do?
They'd be either supporting that effort, they'd be prepping, they'd be doing staff development, or they're doing e-learning, you know, practicing e-learning or something.
Can we somehow couple that with a staff development, or, I mean, do you? If you call it a staff development day, but then your fifth-grade teachers can't participate, then does that count?
Well, e-learning would count, e-learning would count as a school day for those students, but, once again, I'm getting ahead of myself. You know, if, if you really have a lot of questions, I strongly encourage you to have Steve and, and whoever he picks to come in and present it.
Well, I'm not against the idea, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, I'm not either, but I do, I have, I have kind of a similar question. I'm not against that either, that's fine, I mean, it's worked great for the high school, but I wanna make sure, like, when the high school does it, it's a very involved day.
Yeah, it's.
For the freshmen, and the link crew is there, that's a very productive, big-deal day. So I just wanna make sure that if they're doing it, the plans to do it, something along those lines, opposed to, okay, well, we're just gonna have you guys.
They're trying to emulate the high school.
They did this years ago. They did this years ago, though. They had a, they had a fifth-grade only, and they didn't bring in older kids. It's not a link crew purpose. It was about, when we start putting fifth graders in the middle school, we're gonna have an orientation day, and they're gonna do scavenger hunts, and they're gonna do whatever. And then, and then again, more and more and more and more kids enrolled in Raider prep, and all of a sudden, they're like, well, this isn't super useful anymore. These kids are already ready to be in the building, so.
And Raider prep was really useful.
It's very useful, so they can't have it this year. I think it's great, but I think we should have them come in and discuss the next.
Yeah, I'd like to hear more about it.
In orientation? I'm trying to remember who drew that. He was in the first year. I can't remember if he did that or not.
And yes, we've got lots of.
Yeah, they, they were the only ones.
So not against it, but I'd like to, I'd like to hear more.
I'd like to hear them come and talk to us.
And so just recognize, all this is coming at me at once as a new person, and I'm saying, the sooner we get in front of the board, the better, because, 'cause now you've got more time to play this out.
Yep.
But if I wait and tell you in the spring, now, now you're on crunch.
I would say the feedback, that what I, this is just me speaking, what I would like to hear from them is what that date looks like.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Yep.
How, how are you gonna utilize it, and then what is the rest of the staff going to be doing during that time, you know?
And when we did it before in the middle school.
Right.
We worked all day, we covered the feathers, we paired up with our teams, we, yeah.
Scott, are you making that a motion?
It wasn't a motion.
No.
I don't think we need a motion.
We're not asking a motion, it's just a discussion.
If we have, if we have consensus. That's what I'm trying to find out here.
Yeah, I don't think there's an emotion required. I think we're just asking to go back to Steve, and then.
Well, it sounds like you were gonna start making a motion, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I'm motionless.
So if I hear consensus, just schedule Steve and crew, and that's what I'll do.
Yep.
Alright, so we've already done the special education staffing update. So next is the Minnesota Department of Transportation land lease and purchase options for Todd Field.
So I'm an outsider on this one. I received the correspondence in the mail, and we forwarded it to you, and we put it down as a discussion item, 'cause you know far better than I do where you're at on considering this proposal.
My jaw almost hit the floor.
Yeah.
Tim did warn me about this.
This is less outrageous than the last one, but this is so outrageous, when we went from a one dollar, I believe it was.
Yeah.
And now we're paying fifty, fifty over.
Oh, basically fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-four plus thousand taxpayer dollars to lease this piece of property? That is, that is so egregious to me, I can't. I just shake my head, and, and I feel like they have us over a barrel on this.
I know.
Because of where the old concession stand was, where the new concession stand was, I kind of feel like it's a little bit of a bait and switch, that we went through all this, and now at this point, now all of a sudden, they're like, well, you know, guess what, the rent is changing, and it's going up fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, this isn't even leased to own.
No, this is just, if I'm gonna spend fifty grand, at least let me own it.
Yeah.
Well, and that was the comeback to that.
Because sometime in the next five years, they're gonna come into us, and they're gonna say, oh, we have to take this little section down at the very tip, okay, on the western tip, for, for drainage.
Yep, which is why they wouldn't let us buy it in the first place.
And that's, that's part of the issue. When the state moves ahead, those areas along the western border of the improved parking lot, at least in the plans they're discussing now, they will need greater space for water ponding storage. 'Cause apparently, we do not make the commitment now, but it was grandfathered, and it is as it is, but as the state is planning their Highway sixty-one redevelopment in twenty twenty-five, they're going to address part of this ponding basin issue at that time, at least that's.
Right, so we have no idea what that's gonna look like, and I think, and I think we understand that. What I just don't understand here is, where did our relationship with them go, go wrong, that all of a sudden, we went from a one-dollar lease to a fifty-five-thousand-dollar lease?
But I'm also confused, because on the map, it's only highlighted the parking lot is this area, so are they still letting us buy the concession stand area, or?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
There's two things. There's the lease and the possible purchase.
Yep.
For the two spots.
It just, I don't know, it's, it's just a hard thing to.
They don't want to sell you the.
The parking lot, but at the same time, if we choose not to lease the parking lot for fifty-four thousand dollars, what are they going to do?
Make us park on the street? I don't know.
I know, but what are they going to do?
Oh, not, they're not gonna do anything with it.
You wanna play hardball, well, we're not gonna lease it, we'll park somewhere else, I mean.
Yeah, and now they're.
Coming up from, from outside, but that's my initial.
I guess I would like to have a conversation, have somebody have a, 'cause I read the letter, and it's all very boilerplate and lawyerish, and all, you know, and it come, whatever, the tone is very stiff. Let's have a conversation with these people and say, come on, you know, what, what are we doing here? Why, why all of a sudden is, are we changing what has been done for as long as I know?
I guess, my concern is, is I feel like if they're going to come down to this, it's like, why did we put the effort and the dollars into an approved parking lot, looking at this situation, and where we possibly could be at in five years?
Right. Yeah, I would've left it gravelled.
Yes, very much so.
Exactly.
Yeah, but that's already done, so we're not gonna go back and turn it in. So it's super frustrating. I, I appreciate your point, which is, you know, you call them up in an non-adversarial way and say, wow, we just seem to have really gotten off track here. We understand that you're gonna have, you have a stormwater drainage problem coming, and it's probably gonna result, it's gonna result in underground vaults. They're probably gathering enough money so they can rebuild that parking lot, when they get done tearing it up and putting their vaults in there. So, and we say, we get that, we appreciate that. Let's figure out a way, we're, we're not gonna do anything with this land, we're gonna develop this and anything else. We're gonna work with you when the time comes to work with you. But, but these are probably dollars. Why are we spending our, you know, we are all the same taxpayers?
I, I mean, there has to be.
Let's just try and be, like a reasonable conversation. I don't know if that's a, a board chair and you call, call them and say, can we just, like, talk about this, and?
But leasing a parking lot for fifty-four thousand dollars?
For five years.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I, they did not make up this number.
Explain that one.
Somebody built this number, and I'm gonna guess it's what, it's gonna take them to rebuild it.
And then what are they gonna charge us five years from now?
Right.
Right, exactly.
Well, five years from now, they're gonna probably be willing to sell it to us. And ma, no, seriously, and maintain access, 'cause they're gonna say, yep, we're done. We built our stormwater drainage, we're done, we're gonna maintain access.
Or it could, since we don't know how big that ponding area is gonna be, and what the associated infrastructure is going to look like, it could be that.
We don't have a parking lot there.
Or it's so small that we can't do anything, but you've got the parking lot. Where, where does the storage shed fall on that, in this whole?
Yeah.
You know, where, where does all this stuff fall?
Yeah.
So it would not be a stretch for me to contact them and say, I'm new here, can you explain this?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I think that's, I think sometimes the new, the new guy card is the way to go.
Well, and we, and the thing is, is that when we've worked with them on other issues, like the wall of the East Highway sixty-one, they've, they've been very reasonable, they've been very pleasant to work with, by all accounts. I've never spoken to them, but from Tim, when, when he was working with them, it seemed like they were quite amicable, so.
He was happy to hand it off, though, I know that, so.
Well, I know he was unhappy with the last one.
Well, yeah, the last number that came in was.
That was like a hundred thousand.
Well, but that was the purchase thing.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that had a purchase.
But even if we talked about leased to own, I could be more understanding about, about the number. We were getting to the goal of getting it.
Rent to center, leased to own.
Right, I just, um.
Yeah, we should have a conversation, for sure.
So I'm hearing consensus, approach them, say, I'm new, can you please explain and help me understand this? And I can take some of what I've heard, formulate questions, as they explain it to me, and try to get a better handle of what's behind this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sound fair?
Sounds fair.
Okay, and then the other item is, to the best of my understanding is, do you wanna buy the land underneath the new concession stand? Is that what the other part is, and the other offer that Dave presented?
Yeah.
What is it, a hundred parking spaces, maybe?
No, forty-four.
There's forty-four spots? So you're talking like, literally like two hundred bucks a spot?
Forty-four spots, yeah.
I mean, and the, the, the goal, yeah, the goal, the goal was, is that those spots would be, we would have disability parking there, we would have.
Senior.
Senior, which I don't think we have signage there yet, but that would be for our, for senior community members, where, you know what? Parking four blocks away and walking to the game is just too much, so I'm not gonna.
So we're gonna earmark those very specific.
I don't want that, I want you at that game, you know, with everybody else.
Makes great sense. They gotta work with us.
You know, so that was kind of the drive behind this, but, I mean, to just roll over and drop fifty-five thousand taxpayer dollars is not the right answer. I mean.
No, to rent a parking lot.
So a thousand dollars a space, that's ridiculous.
But with regard to the property that's currently under the concession stand, I would like to get us at a place where we owned it.
Yes.
'Cause if we lose, if something happens with the lease under the parking lot, and we lose those forty-four spots, or we go down to fifteen, or whatever the number is, maybe it's zero, fine, I, I don't wanna be in a fight with somebody about our concession stand.
No, and I don't think it needs, I don't think this needs to be a fight. I think, from what I looked at there, this seemed kind of boilerplate, and it's like, hold on, let's really have a conversation about this, and see if we can come to a better conclusion. That's just my gut on it. I could be a hundred percent wrong. Hope I'm not.
Agreed. Okay.
So, so that's a discussion item that they, parking lot, and I have heard consensus to go with them and approach them. Do you want to consider now or in the future, the opportunity to purchase that land? Is that something you're ready to move to an action item? Or to the facilities committee, or what do you wanna do with that?
I don't know if they wanna sell it at this point.
No, I think we just see what they say.
See, this is an investigative-type situation. I think we need to find out.
Both pieces of property, okay, okay, gotcha.
They may have, they may have it, given that they know that they're gonna want to do a ponding basin there. They may not want to deal with the headache of, oh, we're gonna sell it to you, and then, oh, we have to come back, and do an imminent domain on, on this, and buy part of it back, you know?
Okay. Alright, so then our next discussion item is Board Book.
Okay, and I apologize in advance that we're adding some stuff and complicating things and making change, and that it's not all gonna, you know, go over perfectly smooth, but we get to the part now where you can see hopefully some of the advantages to it, um, and, uh, when we talk about consent agenda, um, that's really going to accelerate your meetings now and in the future, and what Board Book does, and we've got a quote in there from Board Book, so you're talking about real numbers, is it makes your staff more efficient, it makes your meetings more efficient, it makes your transparency very easy to produce, because every document that the board sees that's not private is available for directors to click on, it's available for the public to click on, and it's searchable, and you always have that record. Right now, we spend a lot of time cutting and pasting, and making changes, putting this together. Board Book really accelerates that process and makes you a more productive board. You're investing twenty-one hundred dollars or so. You will get that back very rapidly in your staff time, and you try it out and, and, and see if you like it. I don't know if anybody actually went to a Board Book presentation, or David, do, are you planning?
That was, that was, uh, that Board Book presentation was a webinar, and it was yesterday morning, and I only got the last ten minutes of it.
I think they recorded it, though.
Yeah, you could go, you could go back to it.
So for practical experience, I'm just gonna say that if it becomes an action item, I will make the strongest recommendation to try it, because it'll fit in with everything, and you'll decide if you like it or not. Right now, the, the Dropbox part makes transparency difficult to do, and it's also cumbersome, and the way a lot of other boards do things, it's cumbersome, and board feedback is generally that Board Book reduces that, and that's why MSBA supports it, because they're looking, they're looking for the best tool for you to use. But I don't wanna go out and change, it's not the two thousand dollars, I could spend two thousand dollars, I don't need board approval for that. It's more about, this talks, this, the, the meeting will be, look different, and the outward appearance to the public will be different, and I need, I would need board support to make a change like that.
I do think in reading the proposal that you had sent out, the idea of the minutes being automatically created, as you can kind of go in and click, and it's automatically generating the minutes, I could absolutely see how this would be an incredible time saver, and I think with three new board members, and then also having Becky here, who is new to doing the minutes. and then also having Becky here, who is new to doing the minutes and things like that, that this would be the best time to do it, if we were thinking about doing it and kind of starting a routine there.
Well, so it's Becky's idea.
Yeah, I don't think the cost is prohibitive. I mean, I'm not.
No, I think the cost is reasonable.
I, I, I'm not one for just willy-nilly flipping around a couple thousand dollars, but this seems like it, it has enough merit to give it a whirl.
Sure.
Yeah.
A little bit I, I did yesterday on this, I would highly recommend go to their website and then get the full webinar, it's forty minutes long, or something like that.
Well, nine, nine seventeen uses it, so nine seventeen's and looked at there, Still Waters uses it, so what, you know, just to be like, oh, it happened in the past, cool, cool, good.
If it will make it more efficient, consistent, transparent.
Yeah, what I liked is that.
What's worse that happens? We do it, we hate it, and we go back to the process that we have now.
Yeah.
Change is fine.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, we commit to a year.
Do we even, do we need to move that to?
You don't have to, but it really helps in case all of a sudden people don't like it, and a dumb idea was this, it's like.
We were, we were. I'll make a motion to move this, to move the Board Book purchase to an action item.
Totally second, absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving this to an action item?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries, we will talk about this again in a couple minutes.
Item nine, okay.
All right, last discussion item is the social media recommendation.
And Tim had this on, the, the front burner of what I was supposed to follow up with you on, and it seemed like the biggest question out there was have Facebook comments turned on or off? And I would tell you, as the outsider coming in and having gone through, doing one of the first social media policies that any board did, my recommendation would be, make a decision if you want to turn Facebook on or off, but you, you have a bigger strategic thing about how you use social media, what your expectations are for board, staff, et cetera, and that if you have a new policy committee, this really should be one of those new policies that they really look at, look at some examples, and really think about how you do use social media, because social media can be extremely powerful, and it can also really bite you on the backside. And for those that were in this, and I know everybody's been to phase one and almost everybody's been to phase two training, they do update it every time they do it, and what I really liked about going through it for the fourth time was they really came with the more legal perspective they had, they now have a legal specialist on their MSBA team, and his advice was, know exactly, be intentional about how you're using social media, and keep everybody unified on that, because that can definitely prob, be problematic in your role as a board member, when, when people respond, and then how does, it sticks to you like, like flypaper, like glue, when they're responding to something that you intended to be one, you know, one way. There are, you want it, you want two-way communication, but you really wanna ask strategically, do you want it in social media, though? Because trolling and anonymous tossback kind of stuff isn't really furthering the board agenda, whereas a conversation with people is, and society has started to drift away from that, and you can intentionally pull it back. It's like, we love to engage the public, but we do it through our public comment process, and through meeting face-to-face, and talking on the phone, and not throwing stuff back and forth, 'cause I don't even know if you live in the district, or what your real name is, and all that kind of stuff. And then what if students get involved in it? 'Cause then there's discipline involved, you know, with adults, it's just bad behavior, unless it's illegal. With students, well, now it kind of becomes a disciplinary thing, when you say, my math teacher is blah, blah, blah. That wasn't even what we posted, you know, so, anyway, not to make more work, but that, that's my recommendation.
So this, so this fall to the new policy committee, or would we create a new ad hoc committee to examine?
No, I think you just put it as, as a, just like any other policy that you think is worthwhile, or that you don't have, you consider it, look at examples, and, and it would tie into your bigger strategic planning, but by the time you ever got to that, you've kind of got a draft of a policy, and it, it, it's, it's worth taking the time to do it right, to really improve long-term how you deal with social media. But the question of turn Facebook comments on and off, you can deal with that right now if you want to. I'm just bringing that forward as Tim's to-do list they left for me, so.
Okay.
I, I think, I think we deal with all of it.
Yeah. Yeah, and go to the policy committee with it.
So do we need a motion to kick this to the policy committee?
Nope, I just think we'll queue it up for you, like, he left four or five policies that, that you're considering, and they would be the first new policies for you to work on. And, and I've already pulled the work, they've invested on this already, whoever did it, Tim left it for me, and then I've got examples and stuff, because it's still pretty, MSB doesn't even have a social media policy yet. But there've been some pioneer districts that have pulled it together for strategic purposes, and just so every board, especially like a new board member coming on, it's like, this is how you do it, don't, don't, don't be on the, the bleeding edge of this kind of stuff, where it can ruin your experience as a board member.
Monroe said he's working on it, they're trying to work to have a, a policy layout for social media.
All right. So, we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
And this is, the nice part is, there are so many things that, if you follow the MSBA, you know, model, agenda guidelines, which is totally your option, it says the superintendent, you know, you hire the superintendent, and they take care of all this administrative stuff for you. So then I bring, with my, with the staff supporting me, we bring you all these items that just need your consent, they don't need discussion. The board can absolutely pull any item out at any time and discuss it, but you wanna be careful about that, because it's much better when you get the consent agenda, which potentially you could be getting two or one week ahead of time, you know, when we get on this routine, where you're seeing it well in advance, and you say, that's all routine business, we're just gonna give it our blessing and move it through. But if I do see something like, they're gonna hire Jane Doe, and I was on the board when we fired Jane Doe three years ago, why are we hiring them again? You don't wanna bring that up in the meeting, 'cause then you step into, you would call the superintendent, or the Deanna, or whoever, up and say, can you give me some background on this, so I understand this? And then, if you really do have a problem with it, maybe we'll pull it, we'll pull it from the consent agenda and deal with it outside of that. But this is your, I'm bogging your meeting now and now, but I'm promising that we can really speed your meetings up by getting this on there. And not only, you run every personnel thing, and everything that's based on a master agreement, that's non-controversial through here, and you are creating that transparency, you're creating that public record. Some people say, well, don't put my salary in there, don't, no, it's public record, it should be in there, but you put it in a very low-key location that doesn't draw attention to it, but it's, it's absolutely searchable, so that going back and forward, you will always see these actions. The board will have access to them, and the public will have access to go back and, and see, yeah, that board director was a, um, was a coach, and then they became a, a board director, and now they wanna be a coach again, isn't there, you know, nope, there's a record of exactly how you handle it, you handle it the way that you're supposed to be. Or that board member was gonna be a substitute teacher, can they do that? You, you, it'll be there for the public to see, and so, we've put in here, we've cut and pasted instead of attached them as Board Book, but you would see them in Board Book as attachments, and you need to do nothing more than look at them and, and then consent. And if you have questions, the best way to do it is to, to ask before the meeting starts, 'cause the question may satisfy you, or you may ask, let's pull that off, because we're gonna wanna talk more about that in a different setting.
Okay.
So, moving forward and looking at this, this would come up in the agenda, and it'd be, if the consent agenda was agreed to as a group, then we just vote yea or nay to approve the consent agenda as a whole?
Yes.
And move on.
And the financial, the financial bills and stuff like that, that report would be packed in there, too? Where you're like, I don't understand why Jeff Pesta keeps getting five hundred dollars every month, what is that for? You pull it out and talk about it ahead of time, otherwise, if everything looks appropriate, then you just.
Yes.
Consent that, but that information comes to you early, it comes to you in very significant detail, but you, you're ready at the meeting then to just move it through and save yourself a half an hour.
So I understand that this, in this example, we have, we have employee grade changes, and we have one employee with a grade change, that's item number one, and then.
There are different categories.
We have A items for consent grouping, and then we have A items for individual action, so I'm assuming that should be B. And then down on that, number six is approve the following change in grade for employees, and there's no, there's no following.
That was a mistake, that was minus.
Okay, so that's what I was asking about earlier.
That's where we ask for patience, 'cause we were still pulling this together, and we found that later that.
I thought I was, I, I.
No, you're very observant, though.
I know, I had that written down, too, I can find it, yeah. But, so in this case, especially under the employee piece, release, resignations, and re-employment, or employment, we have things on here that basically happened yesterday, and got in the agenda, 'cause the agenda got pushed out a little bit later than normal. If this is coming out a week, two weeks in advance, under these blocks, do we anticipate then that there'll be large blocks of yellow highlighted? Especially, you know, like, oh, in the, in the two weeks since I, I built this, you know, every time it's gonna have these blocks. Here's the seven people that, that are now in this block that weren't in there when I originally pushed it out.
And the pattern that you get in with any board business is, there's always stuff that happens, no matter, if we give you the agenda two weeks early, or one hour early, there's always something that can happen in between, and it could end up on the table file, or with consent items, you just hold it over to the next month, because you've authorized me and the staff to, to make these hires within budget, and so you're just, you're, you're the check and balance on that. You can do it two weeks later, you could do it two months later. It's only a problem when you're checking, or checking me all the time, like, no, I mean, like, like Dave giving you a heads up on the special ed hires, if all of a sudden there's three special ed teachers on there, and you're seeing in the consent agenda, we're not, we're not doing our job in supporting you as the board. But, but, you know, we start getting it out there where you know about it, you know that I've authorized him to post them, he's given you the information about them, and he will come with recommendations to hire at some point, and you'll have to decide if, you know, you're ready to support that or, or not, but you've been getting prepped for that all along, and you can just consent to the hires, or, or you can pull them out and talk about them, if it's about, you know, do you wanna invest that money in or not, and not about why, why are we terminating this person, or why are we hiring somebody who was fired before, or whatever, I mean, you, you just have to avoid those confidential type of things, so. Once again, it's kind of a leap, but when you get in routine, it really expedites your meetings, and, and you are the check on what the staff is doing. And like I said, if you're checking us all the time, then it's, then it's not working. But if we're giving you the information in a timely fashion, and it's the right categories of, of stuff, it's gonna really streamline your meetings, 'cause you are taking these all in, you know, approving them as individual things, and the, the board time can be spent elsewhere, and there are times where things take a lot of time. This is one where it shouldn't, and Board Book will really expedite that as well.
But, but we can start out with the consent agenda as proposed immediately, at the start of the meeting, and we could motion to pull item X out of the consent agenda and approve the rest at that meeting.
Yes, when you, when you, when you are presenting it with them in the superintendent's report.
Yes.
You could always pull an item right then and there, and say, I'd like to, I'd like to pull that from the consent agenda for individual consideration. And then you'd waive the rest of it, you could pull three things off, but you waive.
You can.
The fifty other things.
Right.
Through with your, with your affirmation.
So in this case, is the employee grade change under the consent agenda, or is it an individual action?
It'd be under the consent agenda, 'cause it's just aligning with the master agreement, that our staff has confirmed that they are eligible for that change, but we need, ultimately, we need the board's consent, because you're the ultimate employer of everybody.
Yep.
This is a, this is a broader level question, but I think it's important is, if we are making these sort of process changes in the way we approach our agenda, is the public should be aware, essentially, anything that's under items for discussion, then using this approach.
Mm-hmm.
Could get moved to an action item. Like, if you're like, I'm sort of moderately interested in committee assignments, but I'm not gonna go yet, 'cause this month it's just a discussion item, I can watch that on Facebook, and then I can go when it's an action item, and I can make my point.
Yep.
It could happen, the day it's listed as an action item.
Yes.
Then it becomes.
I think that's a good point.
That's true.
An action item, you know.
And it could be, it could be an asterisk there.
And the person driving in.
Or it could have a line right under that, where you, where you literally, literally have it in the agenda every time. You know, note to the public, these can be made action items.
I would add that to it.
That big of a process change, we need to reiterate that in multiple places. 'Cause I don't want a staff person to see something and say, oh, that's cool, but, yeah, I'm for sure going next month, 'cause that'll be an action item next month.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I think we should add that just right there, under items for discussion, so it's clear and laid out, and.
And once, once the interim superintendent and the new board members catch up to what the continuing board members already know, there'll be, there'll be a clear division, I gotta clear out some stuff that Tim left for me, but ultimately, those discussion items are gonna be really early items, that aren't very likely to become action items in the same meeting, because if, if there was a good chance, it'd already be an action item. I'm just caught trying to just see what you wanna do with some of these discussion items. So that would get smoother, but I do agree with Lisa that that would be a, a great way of just overtly communicating to people, and being, like I said, the goal, if the goal is transparency, you, you make those, you make those notes very obvious to people.
Okay.
And if you, if you're dealing with a discussion item, and you're like, I don't think the public's ready for us to act on this, then you just, then you just don't, because you're the, you've got the pulse of the community to know, like, we're gonna get backlash if we rush this thing through, and like I said, there should be very many decisions like that.
Yep. All right, so at this point, yes, we'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Which is the same as items for consent grouping?
Yep.
I'll make that leave, and say, sure, let's, let's make that motion.
I'll second that, I don't think I'm out of motion yet, I don't approve, I was here.
So I'm in motion now.
Well, we took attendance.
I can see your chair rolling, in motion.
All right.
I'm in seconded.
Do we have any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, items for individual action, first is a resolution directing administration to recommend program reductions.
And now we're moving, because this is an annual thing that you should do in January. It gives you, it give, it allows your administration, or it notifies them that you want to know if there are any reductions that they're going to do programmatically, 'cause any reduction could impact a continuing contract employee. And you cannot, you're, you're, you're fenced in if you don't make this motion. And then, I always try to communicate out to staff and have the sites, something like that. I know you saw that in the board minutes, doesn't mean we're doing cuts, it means it's just keeping all of our options open. It's like certifying the maximum levy, and then coming back later and actually certifying your levy. If you don't certify the maximum, you can't ever go up to the maximum. So, we're doing this, and I don't know yet whether we have to reduce anything. I've already talked to the cabinet, or the cabinet, the leadership team, that we need to right-size for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Yep.
We can, we can be in the great, in the great financial position, but if you only need four sections of X grade, and we have five sections now, well, we need to do something.
So if we were, just pick basket weaving, so nobody's offended, if, if we have three basket weaving teachers, and we know we're gonna have to right-size to two, or two and a half, or whatever, they all three could be on a continuing contract, and so we need to, we need to pass this and the next resolution that comes up, probably next month, to make sure that we have the ability to do that if we need to, and then we would follow all the processes for that. And, you know, the association typically works very closely, and the communication is very good about making sure people understand what's coming, 'cause it, it does happen, and right-sizing, it can happen, and of course, if you get to cutting anything, you know, then everything has to be fair game, so that the board can make a, a organic decision about it.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is acceptance for a gift from both MASPP and NASPP totaling twelve hundred dollars for a national conference in Washington DC that will be held March twenty-third through twenty-fifth, 2020, in accordance with policy four hundred and twelve.
I'll make that motion to approve the gift.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, motion, well, next up is an action item to approve Joe Haas to attend the national conference on behalf of the Hastings School District.
That's a move.
That's a pair.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a thank you to Joe for taking time away from his family to attend something like this, for the betterment, not only of himself, but for the Hastings District.
Well, right, and to serve in a leadership role in the national organization.
Yep. He'll be a representative.
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is approving the following change in grade. Next up is approving the following change in grade. Oh, we already did that.
We failed to adopt the agenda with that change, but that's just a mistake, and that's why we asked for patience so we can just.
I'm just going straight down.
We'll just skip it.
All right, next up is acceptance of donations.
Okay, little explanation here, and once again, it may be a change, and it's up to the board how they want to do things. But the recommendation for donations is you do a resolution which requires a roll call vote. Because then you're making sure that there is not, that there's a record of transparency, that there wasn't any conflict of interest, or that a director had an opportunity to declare a conflict of interest. And the good news is, there, there can be conflict of interest popping up all over the place with board directors. You're in the community. There is a way with parliamentary procedure and with legality to work around virtually every conflict of interest. They just have to be declared. And so doing the roll call vote and the resolution allows people to say, I'm out on that one. Or, um, you know, I actually, I own part of that property or whatever, I don't know, I'll talk about it, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it. And you could still pass everything because then the, the rest of the board would approve it. So it's a little extra step, you read it like a resolution. I think Stephanie has it in front of her. And you use the same process you do for identifying the, the, um, the donations. You just read them in as a resolution and run through a quick roll call vote. That's the best practice. The other thing that would be a small tweak that we could catch up to in the future is people, unless the board would make a policy otherwise, is people can make anonymous donations. The board, when approving it, should know who's making the donation so they can vote. But in the public record, it's listed as anonymous because that's the way they prefer to be. If you're okay with that, you could still have that where I donated to the unpaid lunch accounts, but I don't want my name in there. But you know who it is to make sure it's not somebody trying to get influence or somebody trying to, whatever. They, they are rare things, but they happen, and you don't want it to be you. So this is one way of making sure it's not you.
Read the resolution. Chair would like you to read the resolution.
Yeah, um, so I apologize, newbie here. Uh, how, so I just.
Aye.
Aye, Stephanie Mull, introduce the following resolution move for its adoption. Uh, resolution for acceptance of donations, whereas the following has been generously donated. Um, and then there's an O in here referring to all the donations list provided, we need a.
No.
No.
It'll be, it'll be attaching in board book.
I was gonna say, because it's right here.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, we need a second.
Yeah, we need a second. Yep.
Second.
All right, voting in favor of the resolution, do a roll call. Becky Bysel?
Here.
Stephanie Mull? Yes. Uh, Brian Davis?
Yes.
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Lisa Hadin?
Yes.
Dave Pimble?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
And so thank you for all of the donations and amazing support in this community.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the, the second quarter donations were almost seventy thousand dollars. Which just, again, goes to the generosity of our community. In particular, in one of the in-kind donations, just to reach back on this one because this was something that occurred last year. And this is going back to the Tekla Carbon Fund and the donation of fifty-six acres of land, which, I, I, we've said it before, but I think it merits saying it again. Thank you very, very much for that gift. Thank you for thinking of the school district. You know, with, with that type of generous donation that we can utilize for hopefully generations to come.
Absolutely. Thank you. So now we're moving back to some of the items for discussion that we had moved down. So first up is the committee assignments. Do we have a motion to?
So if somebody can, um, have a motion to the resolution, but then the resolution is basically set up to, and to say, President Clark, I would, I would, um, you introduce a resolution to form the standing committees as listed in that.
Are we gonna have a chance for discussion on that one before we're taking a vote?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a motion to make the resolution.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to make the resolution. And then.
And if it's seconded, then you can have discussion.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to make the resolution?
Second.
Okay, so now, discussion?
I was just looking through the committees here, and I just want to make sure that we have, that, that we've given everyone the opportunity that they want on these committees. Because there's some that have several, and there's some that have less than that. And I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging anybody. And I, and I also still have a very, very big concern about the nine seventeen board member. Because I know that Russ Roloff has very generously offered to stay on until the summer. But we really, really need a board member to do that.
And so, um, I'll talk a little bit about how these had gotten set up, the committees. And I based it based on feedback and what people had said was their biggest priority. And so now, even though in the standing committees, it may be uneven by how many committees people are on. Once you include, um, school board representatives on a committee, then that, that evens out. And so we really tried to work with.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I want to make sure that I'm not taking a spot that someone's like, oh, I really wish, you know, that one wasn't full because I really have a driving desire to be on that committee. I, I want to make sure.
Then I want to make sure I'm fulfilling.
That, that everybody has that opportunity.
The ones that I was on are not present anymore.
Right.
Well, and I was gonna ask, are we gonna show representative committees somewhere? So that it's understood.
That would be my intention, yes.
Community-wide, that, because I think you're staff development, right?
Right here, it's one.
Yeah.
So is, yeah, so there's understanding.
Special ed or community?
A special ed, yeah.
And, and the community conversations.
Yeah.
So Becky has quite a few that are then with the representative role versus the standing committee role.
And, and it's not, I mean, we all know this, but just to reiterate, some of these aren't active all the time.
Right.
Licensed staff negotiations, for instance, we're not doing anything with that this year. I mean, because it's just of how the contracts fall. Next year, yeah, that'll be very busy.
Right.
So, so it's not an indication, just because your name shows up or doesn't show up, really has no bearing on saying, well, you know, this person's doing this and this person is doing this. I mean, it, it just is not.
And I think it would be important to post who is representatives on the other committees. I mean, especially so that, say, Dave Hafman knows who he should be reaching out to for, you know, the special ed advisory committee. I mean, people should be aware of who's on what. It's just that that doesn't need to be voted on in the resolution, so that's just appointment.
And we also anticipate it would be nine boards when we got to this, and we'll just follow up on that later. And just technically, you're, you're forming the committees as standing committees. You can go on perpetually talking about who is on them. And the chair has the authority to ultimately assign or appoint people. And that can be, that could happen every, every meeting, you could talk about that and swap out and stuff like that. So technically, the resolution is just to form the standing committees and the one ad hoc committee. And this was your draft of where it might work, and the representative committees. Can you present it at the same time as the other committees, the personnel, the, the director? Can you present it at the same time when you actually get to that? These are technically placeholders for.
Yeah, and nine seventeen is something that we need to discuss. I did talk to Superintendent Zuzik, and he did mention that we can appoint a community member to fill that role if we do not have a school board member that can fill it. And so we can talk about what that process would look like, I'm not sure, and how we would go through that.
Yeah, I was aware of that, I just feel really strongly that it should be a board member, given our, given that we are part of the consortium. I think it, I think it would, my, I'm not gonna say absolutely positively not, no, you know, oh, we can't have a community member. I just think it'd be really important that a board member fill that role.
And is there someone here who's able to take on that role? That is our most time-consuming committee?
I know with my work schedule, it's just impossible to do.
So we, we may be forced to do that, but for now, I think we've.
And I, I would just say, I did attend the first superintendent's advisory committee meeting for nine seventeen. And, um, they had presented significant staffing additions to the nine seventeen overall staff. And some of the veteran, um, superintendents that were there expressed, I didn't say much because I didn't have much to say, but, uh, they expressed that, you know, you're staffing, you're proposing staffing levels that are greater than what we have in our own districts. And that would be a very tough sell to our school boards. And, um, obviously, if it goes straight to a representative who's not aware of how it impacts the, the overall board and the overall budget, that could be a really tough position for them to be in. If things were really copacetic and, and not much was going on, I, I guess you could, you know, use a community member. But I would say, based on what I heard at that meeting, it should either be a current member, a exiting member who's still connected, or maybe even like a past board member who could be applying, be appointed. Or somebody who's done work in similar roles, like a city council or something like that. But to bring in somebody who doesn't understand how a board works and be responsible for some pretty, um,
This is a big financial impact.
Financial impact that, that rolls back to the district, that's a tough position to put somebody in.
I agree.
Well, I had brought this up previously with you, Kelsey, that, um, right now, I would not feel comfortable moving into that position. But a year or two years down the road, I'm interested in being a very active in nine seventeen. It's just right now, I need to get that foundation underneath.
Well, the other benefit, and I think I brought this up before, the benefit of picking someone now is that we could have that double coverage between the clean Russ and the new person coming on to help them learn the ropes. If that helps sway your decision at all, Stephanie, I'm not trying to pressure you, please don't answer because it'll make me feel bad. But.
And if someone decides that they can take on that role, I mean, like Jeff said, I can switch the committees around so that there's a better balance and whoever's on nine seventeen is not overloaded with other committee assignments.
Right.
I need more information about nine seventeen, so I'll, I'll reach out to Russ and I just can't make a decision right now.
Yep, that's a great idea. Because he was in that same position. So he can fill you in, he can give you the realistic view of what, not, not only what it, what it will take, but what the current state is of, of the board at nine seventeen.
All right, so we do have a motion for the resolution.
And a second.
And a second. So if we would like to adopt the resolution then for the.
To establish standing committees.
Yeah, to establish the standing committees.
Introduce it, just substituting one of the standing committees instead of donations.
Okay, so we're going to the same consensus.
Back to you, Seth.
I, say Becky.
Becky. Introduce the motion.
Okay, so Becky Bysel introduced the resolution for the committee, right?
Standing committees.
Do establish standing.
The establishment of standing committees.
We should all talk.
And not in you.
Let's all tell her what to do.
We can do it a good job at the same time.
That's why I'm not saying.
Right, um, for the standing committees and the ad hoc committees, right? Okay. Um, who was it, that second? Brian Davis, second and, second and, yeah. The motion for the adoption of the four-point resolution. Voting in favor of the resolution, Becky Bysel?
Yes.
Stephanie Mull, yes. Brian Davis?
Yes.
Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Lisa Hadin?
No.
Dave Pimble?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
All right, so moving forward. The next bit is to move the November eleventh work meeting date and combine it with the November eighteenth board meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, and the last one that I have is adopting board book. If we have a motion.
At tier one.
At t, at.
Right, because there were two teachers.
Two tiers.
Yeah.
It's their classic, their basic package.
Their base, yeah, so tier one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second again.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Administrative reports?
Okay, so now we're cooking, this would be a quick recommendation for how to package administrative reports. You start with superintendent, if there's anything else, then get covered, it's an opportunity for a clearinghouse there. And then you go to student enrollment, then, then you would also add, add any other reports that you were expecting for that meeting. If you went in the middle of school, Steve Colletts should come in and talk about something we put on the administrative reports, you're gonna come in. You would then miss the athletic activities director to come in once a quarter and give you an update on participation activities. You put it there, and then we invite that person in. So you, you really would give directions, who you want to come in, and we put them on there. It could be one, and it could be five, whatever it is that you want. Then I also think that, um, past experience has shown it's very helpful for strategic planning to have a monthly snapshot of your student enrollment. And, um, you can give feedback to what, what you want to see in there. Over time, I kind of evolved to a, the most informative thing for the board was your current month enrollment, pre-twelve, in a column, you know, showing each level. Then you'd also have what it was exactly a year before, so you could see just, you know, a quick snapshot of a trend. And then sometimes it's helpful to show like the opening day, the closing day of school number, the opening day of school number, your October first number, which is what all your federal and state grants and other funding things are triggered off of. And you just have a little, little tiny table that shows you that snapshot information. And you could say, we really don't care about end of school and start of school. We're more concerned about today and October, we customize it, but we just have that in there, and it's just an informative thing for you. Basically, you read it ahead of time, you don't even have to talk about it unless you say, what happened? We lost ten kids in sixth grade since last month. And we say, yeah, two families moved, you know, two big families moved to where. And it really helps you to know that dialogue. And this can also be where, um, um, if you want, the sites are giving your, are creating a report of who left and who came in, whereas if you do want to make calls and things like that, every month you have a list of who came and left. And, and you can distribute it and have liaisons to certain buildings, whatever you want. But you're gonna be in tune to the, to what's happening. And then when you do get to strategic planning, because the stuff you were just talking about before, you're kind of wishing you had a strategic plan that said, duh, we want enrollment. But no, what really do you want for enrollment, what are your goals and, and what's the trade-off? Because, yeah, you have to build things when you have more enrollment. But it's worth it, and all that kind of stuff, it'll all be part of your, potentially, those decisions, part of your strategy. And then the last thing would be, that's your opportunity there and see, to have reports that, committees that have met since the last meeting to give their report. And, um, boards typically try, try to fight this, but I'm gonna make the recommendation that they have a little template, and I can show some examples where it says, this is your standing committee, this is the mission of the committee, and here's a little document where you can put notes, so when you come to the meeting to give your report, you're not, did we meet or didn't we? Yeah, we did, we, I forgot what we talked about. I mean, it just doesn't make your meetings very efficient, and people, for some reason, don't like to fill in that template, but it makes your life easier, so I can get some examples of templates for consideration. But that's where you'd be to have your reports, pack them in right there, it's a good way to, you know, close out your meetings. So we're open to, open to suggestion, but that's kind of my, my pitch for how to do that part of the meeting.
I like the breakdown of the enrollment report that was given.
Kind of like a checkbook register, almost.
Kind of, see where you're at and what's changed.
Yeah, I really like the tracking of it to, to be able to follow up with families, just to make sure we're not missing anything.
Yeah, right, why did two families just leave the district? Can we reach out to them, why are they open and rolling now?
I think we give it a try, and we're agile, and we keep what works, and we get rid of, we tweak what doesn't, and.
Well, right, I think when we actually get in, in a year, get into a strategic planning process, you know, maybe enrollment is not our thing. You know, maybe it's about.
Quality.
You know, something, engagement, what does that look like? Kids that are involved in post P S E O or after-school activity at middle school, whatever. Because I, I mean, enrollment is important, don't, I mean, obviously, but, you know. Cause I, I mean, enrollment is important, don't, I mean, obviously, but, you know, I want this to be about the student experience and how we're starting with kids.
Well, and that experience will feed enrollment, so I think enrollment is secondary.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we get the right, we know what's the horse and what's the cart.
Okay, so I think figuring this out, what we want on a report like that.
Well, take a shot at it.
Yep, start with something.
We'll shoot holes in it.
Alright, so I will actually give the superintendent report because that's on there today, and it's gonna be a quick one. Um, I handed out something for you that I think will be helpful, not, not only for the new members, but maybe for the community members, is you're seeing the cycle of a school year, and it's helpful to know, if you don't already, what the budget timeline is because you're gonna be seeing items based on what our district's budget timeline is. You're also gonna be seeing things which one is already happening today, that, um, making sure that we do that resolution on reduction of staff so that we don't miss the, the window of opportunity. And so, the other things you'll be seeing are based on our HR or staffing calendar. So those are good things just for your reference to have. And also, how is the district currently organized? Because if you get into strategic planning and talking about, "Well, let's beef up HR," or "Let's streamline whatever," then you're talking about adjusting this, and it's good to know what you are right now. And it's, it's a functioning district, so this is good, but you're always looking at strategically where, where the areas you wanna get better, or, um, like I said, make an effort on teacher recruitment or whatever. It's gonna come down to changing your organizational schedule. And then the last thing I'll say, um, in the superintendent report is, thank you for your patience with this meeting 'cause, you know, we're, like I said, we just decided, we're not gonna dip our toes, we're gonna jump in and we're gonna get feedback on, on, on kinda changing the way we do things because, uh, not necessarily the normal role for interim is to shake things up, but, um, you know, working with the chair, that's what we came up with. And, um, and I also thank you, um, Scott was definitely involved in negotiating the interim contract and understands that I wanted to support the Kenyatta and Mingo district as they were transitioning out. And, um, hopefully you haven't noticed too much that I've been covering that place all month. Um, and I'm cutting the final cords here, so it, you know, for over the next week, unless it's a true emergency, I really should be doing next to nothing for them. It's, it's been a challenge. Uh, it's not as fun as it sounds to, to operate two districts at the same time. Um, hopefully you didn't, Becky noticed, but hopefully nobody else really noticed that I was doing that, so thank you for that. And it's coming to an end, and I, I appreciate you supporting that district because, as you heard from the search committees, every time somebody gets a superintendent, not every time, but often, when they get one, and when they get who they want, they're taking them away from somebody else.
It's exactly what we would want as a district, so treat others as you'd like to be treated, so.
Thank you again, I appreciate that.
Great. So, as far as future meetings, we'll all be meeting again tomorrow to choose the selection of the superintendent search firm. And then our work, our work session is February twelfth, and our regular board meeting is the twenty-sixth.
Okay, not that I wanted to lay a judgment, or adjournment, but we do have a cou- we did have a couple of committee meetings. You gonna get a little brief call? Did you have one?
I wanted to touch base, 'cause since you brought up the future meetings, I think it's important, especially going forward, evolving to board book, that we, when we get to this part, we also state where those meetings are located.
Yep, good point.
And then backing to what Lisa's...
And put committees in there too, yeah.
Yes, and then backing to Lisa's point about the committees.
Yeah, I was going back, I was going back up an item to the school board committee reports, 'cause in the interim, oh, the interim is, since our last meeting, we had the community story, community partner storytelling thing, and we had a self-funded insurance. Make this thing go till ten o'clock, I don't like it.
We could just stay till, till tomorrow's four o'clock meeting.
I know, I know, we should. It's too bad we're not having a morning meeting. So I don't know if you wanna, like, a quick brief call? I mean, self-funded. Oh, I'm worried, this might be the first year we don't put money in the reserve. Because, which is not worried or not, but it means we're getting close to that, to decision about that.
Yeah, I, I...
And we got some bids coming in in the next couple of months that'll give us a little butter next year.
Correct me if I'm stepping out of line here, but, perfect. My interpretation of it is not that we are... My concern is not that we are not putting money into the fund balance. We have a very strong fund balance. My concern is that our projections, leading us to not add to the fund balance, mean that our projections are about seven hundred thousand dollars off. Because at the start of the contract, with all the assumptions that we put in place, which are built, they're not just pulling them out of the sky, they're built on past experience. Our assumptions were, we would be adding approximately seven hundred thousand dollars to the fund balance, which was significantly lower than we've done previous years. Cause previous years is one point one or one point two million, okay? So, that is the part that sends up a red flag to me that, oop, something is changing. Okay? Our, our projections in previous years have been very favorable, and I, I would, I would even say close. I mean, never spot-on, but, but close. And this year, just the overall claims experience, both in the number of claimants, the average price that we're seeing per claim, I don't think we're really, I don't think we're really seeing any big, any big claimants.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like it's out of, it's like, yeah, but it's not like it's out of line with previous years. You know, where all of a sudden this year, we have, you know, ten big claimants, and previous years, we had three. I, I think it, I think what we are seeing is the trend of the six to nine percent catching up. And, you know, hey, we flew under the radar, you know, under that for a few years. And now, this year, maybe we're gonna be over that. So, but we have a very healthy fund. This is what we prepared for. That's the, that's the silver lining, is that this is not a, "Oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do" situation. It's, it's just a, hmm, things are not going quite like we had anticipated. And I, and I think, I'm thankful that we have the, the group that we have to help us figure out, okay, what...
Yeah, how do we respond?
How do...
And the committee is really good.
Yeah, what's, what's causing it and, and what's the right thing to do? Because coming out of that committee, we will be, we will, as a committee, be making a recommendation that then comes back to the board for approval in terms of rate setting. And that comes later in the year, after we get our con, you know, our, our next bids for contracts and everything else. You know, but we'll look at that and say, "Okay, you know, how do we do this?" And, and the, the situation that we're in is that we've been building, building fund balance, building fund balance. Everything's on the upward trend. Well, if this year, if we're flat, and we, and we say, "Okay, we're gonna take a zero percent increase," then we have to look at, well, what does that look at? Because claims are probably still gonna continue to trend up. So what does that look like if all of a sudden we're dipping into the fund balance for half a million dollars? Where previously, you know, can we afford it? Yes, we, we probably could. But it's not just about affording it, it's about, well, what trend line does that put you on? So that you're not doing this, "Oh, we're gonna take a zero. Oh, we're gonna take a nine." And then the next year, "Oh, we're gonna take a one, and the next year, we're gonna take a ten." It's like, no, you don't wanna do that. You want to gracefully, we, we gracefully built this up and we want to gracefully, you know, adapt to it now. That was a lot of talking, so sorry.
No, that was, I think that was a good summary, and it, and it will be in the spring that the committee will bring a recommendation for rate adjustments.
Good summers.
Which then directly links into all of our contracts and the budget, directly.
Yeah.
Alright, community partners, we met.
Yep, and now, we're going to be switching which representatives are there.
Yeah, and the structure might be, I don't know if the structure, the purpose is starting to shift a little bit about just sharing, being open.
Yeah, really.
Staying in conversation with, um, Alina in the hospital, in particular, Chamber of Commerce, the school board, and, um, the city.
Yeah.
Just stay in conversation. What are you guys doing? What are you here? I wanna be ready to, if I go someplace, if I go to MSPI, I wanna be ready to talk about the city.
Yeah.
I was at gymnastics the other day, there was a new family trying out, I could talk to them and say, "Oh, what do you know about Hastings?" This is what I could, you know, just be ready to have those conversations.
Knowing what's going on with our enrollment, you know, then the city can kind of gauge who's coming in, who's going out, and how that's happening. And Alina can use that to say, "What sort of programming do we need to be having here? Are we having more kids come in, are we not having more kids?" And so, it's really just sharing information as a community and, um, being able to ask questions if we have questions of the city, and just building those relationships and making those connections better.
Right. And then the last committee, and Dave reminded me of this, and this met back in December, was meet and confer. I think we gave a very brief summary at the last board meeting. Um, similar topic to the previous meet and confer, which had been the spring before, which was really about, um, behavior support. Behavior support and staff support, and what does that look like, and how do we do it? What is a resource piece on that? And I think, I, you know, definitely got the impression, it was even an impression, it was articulated, that this will be part of our ongoing conversation.
Yeah.
Um, you know, meet and confer is for non-contract issues, so it's like, how do we, what does this look like? How do we support it? You know, and part of it is about resourcing special ed, and part of it is about training, and part of it is, you know, it's...
I think that ties into the, the other committee that we had, uh, MOO about the...
Right, yeah, the behavior support.
The behavior support committee, and that's...
Yeah, that was a response, that was a response to me.
And that's been, it's been informative. You know, we certainly haven't solved all the problems, but I think we brainstormed on some of the good ideas and started to implement.
Well, and it keeps it, again, when we talk about what's...
Trying to move it in the right direction.
What's, what's our strategic vision or purpose or intent or goal? And, and I think it would be fair to say that, that it's likely that something around behavior supports, pupil support, staff support around a respectful educational environment workplace. What does that look like and how, what, how do we support that? I think that's fair to say, that's something we wanna track and pay attention to. And provide our employees and our students and our families.
Okay, well, we officially made it past ten. I know that was your goal. Not up to going till four.
We're getting our money's worth out of these guys, don't. It's a wintry mix.
Is that what it says?
It's a very pleasant way to say it. It's a wintry mix.
Okay, Jeff is sharing me, we don't have to catch up every month, so...
At least not right now.
Yeah. Alright, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, meeting is adjourned. And this is where I would tap a gavel.